Okay. We are getting started. This is the Planning and Zoning Commission Zoning Regulation Update Subcommittee Special Meeting on Wednesday, October 8th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. I am Krista Nielsen. I'm standing in for our Chair, Dan Radman, who will take over momentarily when he gets here. But for the sake of time, we're going to get started. In terms of a roll call, Tom Benton.
Here.
John Engel.
Here.
John Chris.
Here.
Krista Nielsen, I'm here. Eric Knowles is absent. And here comes our fearless leader, Dan Radman, is here. Okay, so the first item on the agenda is, we're going to turn it over to our consultants, BFJ, and it's Project Timeline Review, Future Meeting Scheduling, and Review of Project Approach for Upcoming Months.
Could you just turn on the lights?
Yeah, you need green lights.
Just got it a little harder.
A little harder. I was just thinking maybe we should reintroduce ourselves. I'm Frank Fish from BFJ.
To Dan Goldberg from BFJ.
And Emily Tolbert from BFJ.
And we'll share in this presentation, and this will really be a back and forth, you know, with you, more of a discussion. But I'm just going to do this Item 1, and Dan, I know you just came in, but we hadn't started yet, so Item 1 is...
Well, that's good then.
No, no. And Item 1 is this little, I think you all might have it in your packets, but just to reconfirm the public workshop for October 23rd here at 7:00 PM. So we've got a presentation later to sort of go over with you, but wanted to make sure of that. And then we wanted to also, for the subcommittee, if we could set next meeting date, we had some possibilities here. And Sarah, I don't know if these are, but 12-2, 12-4, 12-10, 12-11.
Yes, so those were all dates where the meeting room was available.
Yeah. So.
For the next meeting after.
Yeah, for after, it'll be, yeah, yeah, and it'll be after the workshop, so.
The third meeting. This is number one.
Yeah. And so if we could, of those four dates, we're thinking, what is best for you? I mean, it's good for us to set a date tonight, I think, so that we all aim for that date. We are good, I think, Suzanne.
Any of those dates.
And Emily, all of those dates are good for us.
So it's on the agenda that BFJ provided, so the December 2nd, 4th, 10th, or 11th. And our regular meeting is the 16th that month.
I think I'm good on any of those dates.
I'm good on all except 12-4. Or 10, 12-11, sorry, 11. Yeah. Okay, and it's before Hanukkah, which is useful.
I think we're down at 12-2.
Actually, 12-11 is out too.
12-2 or 12-10.
12-2 or 12-10.
And you said you couldn't do that one either. So it's down to December 2nd or December 10th, I think. Is that?
I would prefer the 10th because I will likely have a ZBA meeting on the 1st, so I'd prefer not two nights in a row of meetings. 10th works first.
Does anybody have an issue with the 10th?
I'm good.
Set that date.
Put in the calendar right now lest I forget.
Exactly.
That's true.
That's a 7:00 PM, I assume?
Yes. Does that work for you, Tom?
It's be frozen. It's gonna be frozen. He's like, oh, he's coming back.
Yeah, that's good for right now.
Okay.
Okay, good. Great. And that'll allow us also to debrief with you, you know, after the workshop. Things at the workshop where, you know, they may affect a little bit emphasis of something we're studying, so. So that's good. And, all right, so that's, and then we would like to, this we'll do, I think, with Sarah, but we'd like to get a focus group meeting of the practitioners underway, if we could. We were thinking, Sarah, of November, you know, maybe before Thanksgiving, if that's possible. I know you're, we'd rely on you in terms of, I know a couple of practitioners, but I mean.
Yeah, so since our last meeting, I've compiled a list of repeat offenders, not offenders, but applicants, a better word, of...
Frequent flyers.
So in the last five years, there are 17 practitioners who have submitted at least two applications to P&amp;Z or ZBA.
Are we talking law firms?
So it's a mix of attorneys, engineers, architects, and builders, or like real estate professionals. And then there are eight frequent flyers for contractors who have constructed new homes in town in the last three years. So there, so that's 27 people. So, you know, I'm kind of looking to you all and suggestions from BFJ of, so, you know, I've identified these 27 people. I threw together a quick interest survey if we wanted to go that route to try to weed people out. 14 of the 27 people own land or live in New Canaan, so do you want it to only be New Canaan people? So there are different avenues to go. I'm guessing.
14 all. Are they landlords only, or are they developers as well, or?
So it's, so I would say two are probably just landowners in town that are like landlords, and then the rest actually like live in New Canaan, but it's a, of that 14, three are attorneys, eight are builders or real estate people. One's an engineer, one's an architect, and one's a landscape architect.
From our, from our point of view, a little bit, it's good to get a lawyer or two who may practice before you.
You know, plenty of those.
Yeah. Longing lawyers, don't worry.
Yeah.
There's ten lawyers.
You know, who, you know, can speak about the code a little bit, and a developer who actually deals with it, you know, as, not as opposed to, I'm not, I'm not ruling out a landowner, because the landowner might be. But if it's a landowner who really knows the code or can, you know, speak to it. But I would tend to go for the, the, I know that, you know, I tend to go for the lawyer and developer who practices before you. That I think they would be, they would be helpful to get their viewpoint, you know.
How many people, like in your ideal situation, how many people would be on this?
If we do a Zoom call, it would be nice to have, I'm not saying we couldn't do 10 on a Zoom call, but it'd be nice to have four or five.
Okay, so that few.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Even two Zoom calls. I mean, we could do two Zoom calls, or one Zoom call is really primarily the practicing attorney before you with the developer client or something like that. And then do a second Zoom call, I don't mind. I find sometimes when you get, like, we couldn't do 20.
Yeah, 20 is too big.
Be productive.
Yeah, but so, I mean, it's kind of, you know, how do we want to weed it down, you know?
Yeah.
Send a query to the 14 and see who's interested.
So just the New Canaan.
Yeah, start there.
Landowner.
And then, I mean, I think it would be good, I mean, depending on interest, but to get diversity of viewpoints, I mean, like you're saying, definitely you need an attorney, you definitely need a developer, engineer, architect, I could give one slot to either of those.
By the way, an architect would be good, because they tend to, some of them would know the code pretty well.
Yeah, but I'm just saying you don't want five attorneys.
Yeah, no, I got that.
Could just raise the bar in saying, you have had to come here X times as opposed to half X times.
So honestly, other than the attorneys, everyone else would get probably, yeah.
We have architects, developers, attorneys.
Oh, contractors.
Developers, contractors, yeah.
So again, if we're doing people that only, like, of these practitioners that actually own land in New Canaan, it's one architect, one engineer, three attorneys.
I don't think we can just nail it down to that. I mean, like.
Then I shouldn't send the interests. So should I send it out to all 27?
Just thinking through, it'd be good to get a, a good representation, get two attorneys, two architects, two builders, for example, just to get, so you're not, you're not limited to one architect expressing their opinion, you have competing opinions, potentially.
Do also send it out to the larger group. Once we set a date, there might be less people that can attend, so it might naturally win it down, so, yeah.
Okay.
Need be, then we'll have two Zooms.
Yeah, we can do two Zooms, yeah.
Yes.
Two, so it's the person who received the email as opposed to, well, I can't go there, but when it's someone else, you could do that. I like the idea of having attorneys on one and call it other.
Or I would add attorneys and their clients, the developer, you know, on one, you won't get, you might get quite a few of them, but, I mean, they're one group, and if we wanted to do the other group as a second Zoom, that's fine. Just a, you know, thought. Well, we were hoping, you know, maybe after the workshop, actually, if it went out soon before the workshop, you could tell them, hey, if you want to know what's going on, workshop's the 23rd, but we'd like to talk to you after that, after you have a big picture view of what we're doing in November, and then we'd do two Zoom calls, maybe the first, second week in November.
Okay.
That might be great.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I guess I would land on, let's kind of come up with what our ideal bench looks like, two of, you know, these different groups, probably send the interest survey out to everyone, and then see what the response is, and try and fill two slots for, I don't know, I'm staying too.
And so just, just to be clear, the, the commitment is, in theory, that they attend a Zoom meeting in November, and then another one in like March, April, once we have draft.
Yeah, that could be.
That's what we had initially talked about, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
One in the, one in the fall and one in the spring.
And it'd be kind of one hour Zoom call.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, that's helpful.
That's terrific, yeah. And then the next, that point here, oh, sorry.
I was gonna say, we're aiming to do that in early November, so that.
I mean, first two weeks before Thanksgiving.
I'm flexible.
Yeah, and we've got good dates, we can, Suzanne.
Yes, I can send you the dates.
And then we just wanted to reconfirm the, the next, that point on our Item 1 is, just, you know, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, 12-16, is that?
And that would be a briefing to the entire Planning and Zoning Commission about the work we've been doing.
Will we have enough processed and digested by that point?
Well, I think you'll be beyond the first workshop.
Yeah.
Which hopefully all of P&amp;Z is invited to and everything. And then we're going to present to you tonight some, you know, initial ideas that we've gone over with Sarah. So I think by that point, we might have enough for, you know, to present to the full commission so that they know.
Because we are going to meet on the 10th anyway, prior to that.
Do we have, it's too soon to know what our workload is for December.
Yeah, so, I mean, at this point, October is going to be very busy, carry over into November, so I'm hopeful we're done in November.
Have a Christmas party in December.
But I'm, I'm hoping that.
Happy to be here for that.
I'm hoping that we clean everything up in November, and then we're not going to start anything crazy in December. If, if we get anything large, we're not gonna start it then.
I thought if we were an agenda item on the 16th, as Sarah said, December 16th, maybe that's, we don't have to take a long time, but.
Yeah, just to give a, an update.
Yeah, an update to everybody.
Okay.
For those of you who, you know, you're on the committee, it'll be a little repetitive, but I find because, you know, at the end of the day, it's the whole P&amp;Z that acts to adopt, it'd be nice to just give everybody an update on the 16th. And then the last one should be the easiest one, but I'm not sure. And that is, meeting with the town attorney, we were hoping, Sarah, we could just, if you gave us his name, contact, or if you want, or we give you dates, or just to call, just to have one call with him, just a Zoom call, just to let him know what we're doing, timeline, sort of, just brief him.
Yeah, I mean, I can set that up.
Yeah, that'd be great.
They are aware.
Yeah, great, yeah. I always just find that it's helpful to do at the beginning, particularly of a zoning. Because at the end of the day, they're gonna, I think, the logical thing usually is, they're going to be asked to review that zoning for, you know, legal issues, and that we haven't gone too far in any direction, and that kind of thing, just, I think it's always nice to start out with the town attorney on, but.
Anything specific to them?
No, it'd be almost a repeat with the town attorney, I think of.
I mean, I would like to talk to the town attorney about the review that we've done of the state.
State law.
Like, he did a review of all the public acts in the past, like, five years that have changed the zoning regulations, and so we just want to make sure that we are running through those things correctly with them, and making sure we're interpreting the law.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Emily, that's good. Emily, I might spend some time on that, and we've got that later on the agenda too, as something to discuss with you. Changes in state law. Seems like all the work we're doing, we're always learning, always learning some new things.
It's because the goalpost's always moving.
Yeah, the goalpost is moving, yeah, so.
Okay.
Right. That was the, that was just the Item 1 timeline. And meetings, I don't think we have to, we, now that we've gone through these, the timeline remains the same, which, you know, you've all got a big handout of the timeline. I think we're basically where we want to be, we're sort of on schedule, the public workshop, the big square, the first green square in the month of October, we're on Schedule 4, and, you know, there's that handout for the October 23rd workshop, and that's on the agenda later, and we'll go through, we'll go through that, so.
When you say workshop, so I'm a resident, I come in, I don't know what's going to happen much, what am I going to see?
Actually, we printed out the presentation, a draft presentation, and we wanted to go over that with you and make sure that you're comfortable with all of the items where, including in the presentation, but the first workshop or meeting is really intended to explain what the process is, and what the current state of the zoning regulations is, how this builds upon the recently adopted POCD. So the third item on the agenda is to go over the presentation for the workshop. That way, you all have an idea of what we'll go over at that meeting.
Okay, so it's a chalk and talk?
Yeah, it's really a presentation, well, we hope it will be, is a presentation to, oh, we, let's go to, we could go to Item 3 now and come back to.
We can play it.
All right, well, maybe we'll do two fairly, two is fairly quick, I think. And then we'll go to that whole public workshop, Emily's going to talk, is go through that workshop, because that'll take five or six minutes. So Suzanne.
Sure, yes.
Item 2.
So in thinking about the best methodology for going through the entire zoning code and making sure that each section gets the attention of, you know, the subcommittee, and also incorporates all of the feedback we're hearing along the way, we thought it made the most sense to go section by section on the meetings, and that way, we can also give you a clear deliverable for each meeting. So an analysis and recommended changes for each section, that way you can have discrete deliverables throughout the process, and we're not sort of jumping around through the zoning code, meeting to meeting. So obviously, if things change throughout the process, we can adjust, and this is open to discussion, if you think this makes sense to you, but the preliminary approach, there's really three major subcommittee meetings before, in the timeline, we had estimated the draft recommendations of the zoning changes to zoning and map changes to be delivered to you. So in order to make sure that we have work done by that time, which is next spring, we figured it would make sense to split the sections of the code up into these three meetings. The first one would focus on business zones and basic standards. Basic standards, some of that falls into the ideas of the landscaping, native plantings, some of the site standards that apply to all zones. Then in January, we would talk about residence zones, special zones, and affordable housing, which is included in some of those special zones and residence zones. And then lastly, in February, once we have a better idea of what the other sections of the code will look at, look like, we can then circle back and finalize definitions, making sure that things are accessible, and that we're removing definitions that aren't referenced anywhere in the code or superfluous. Look at special provisions, the procedures, if there's a way to simplify that, make that more user-friendly, and then also updating the appendices to make sure they have the most up-to-date information. So that's the preliminary approach for each meeting, but we'd love to hear your thoughts, and if that order makes sense to you, or if you have any questions.
So just two notes, one is a question for you all to think about. We have right now, obviously, a large text change application that's impacting the business zones that you're hearing right now, so is it, I don't know what your preference is, do you want to just dive right in in December to the business zones to talk about it while it's fresh in your mind, or do you think you're going to want maybe like a month off to debrief from whatever happens with this Locust App application?
Dan, what do you think?
I wouldn't mind diving right in, talking business zones in December.
Okay. And then just one note for BFJ, while in theory, I, you know, at first glance, I thought the affordable housing in January makes sense. All of our affordable housing right now is only allowed in our business zones, so I just don't know how that will fit in well. Because we're going to have to jump back and forth if.
At first, we had affordable housing in February, and then I, I was thinking, oh, affordable housing might go with the.
Well, I don't think we can talk about.
Affordable housing was the incentive zoning regulations.
That only applies to the business zones.
Yeah, but in the code, it's a separate section in the code.
Okay, so like the inclusionary zoning section?
Yeah.
Okay. I just don't know if it makes sense to do a deep dive on the business zones and not talk about inclusionary zoning.
We can, we can.
We can move it up there.
Yeah, we can move it up there, and if we don't, if there's anything that also falls into it within the special zones and residence zones, we can always circle back to it at the following meeting. And so we could discuss it at both, it probably will be a discussion that takes a decent amount of time anywhere.
A couple of points more as a notice, things you might hear, either in writing or at the next meeting. A few topics tend to generate a reaction. Form-based can. And so explaining these terms, do not assume anyone will understand it. Many will, but I would start with, let me explain what that means. Transitory and development, too. Some of the proposals out of Hartford are, you know, 10-story buildings around a bus stop, which I don't think will go over well in New Canaan. And so exactly what that means for New Canaan, and the ways that can be defined, might be useful. Institutional uses is also a matter that has taken up a great deal of the commission's time, I think that's a fair comment, in recent years. And issues of what one can do, how those footprints might get expanded or not expanded, and what one can do within that footprint. I think people will start asking questions about this and share their views, so beware of that. And I find generally that heightened density issues tend to be a significant focus of people. Particularly if you have clusters of density, as opposed to, well, this one's a little higher, this one's a little smaller, and variations, but I would be surprised if these matters were not brought up by residents and want to discuss them at length, so I'll leave it at that.
I think you're right.
Can I just add to that, that I think it's going to be, it would be better if we took some on some of those more controversial things earlier in the process, because it might cause people to then come to subsequent meetings and continue to want to talk about it. And the second point is, because if we put all the controversial stuff at the end, people will say, well, wait a minute, you know, what do you mean, there's no more time to talk about this stuff? And the second thing is, I think we should be prepared to be flexible with this agenda. I can see some people coming and wanting to talk about their issue, be it institutional creep, and we say, oh, sorry, you missed that, that was last month. I've been, you know, on, we've all been there enough times, and you feel bad that people are, you know, they feel bad, they feel embarrassed, oh, you know, am I allowed to speak now? Is now the time, you know? You know, and they've been working on it for a month, and they get here, and we're like, yeah, we're not, we're not tackling that this month, so I just want to be sensitive to that.
Is the intention of these subcommittee meetings, are these like workshop meetings for internal, like, so like, we don't want to be taking public comment.
With you, rather than the public, although the public can.
Good and accessible.
So they'd be more with you, all we're trying to do is not jump around too much.
Right.
Organize ourselves so that we meet with you.
I'm just saying, we should plan to be flexible, because if somebody does show up, and they spend their hour, or like, why are you here anyway? Oh, I thought we were going to get to talk about. And there's some other, and the other point, and I don't know if this actually fits, but there's some things that aren't classic institutional uses, but I'll give you an example. The Land Trust owns 50 properties around, and I just happen to know this because I've been on the Land Trust Board in the past. They own 50 properties around town, and they, many of those were donated by somebody many years ago, not by the current owner. And so the Land Trust for, has been around since 1967, and a lot of donations, then a lot of, then 20 years of not donations. A lot of these people are saying, what do you mean, you're opening up the property to the public? What do you mean, you're creating a parking area and public access, you know, in my neighborhood? Now, on the one hand, we want, you know, everybody loves the Land Trust, and we love, and we love nature. On the other hand, some people feel like, oh, my gosh, my neighbor, my neighborhood is changing. Some of these properties, for example, now have on-street parking in residential neighborhoods with as many as eight cars lined up on the road. And so those are the, so it's not just the YMCA that is an institutional use, or a school, or a hospital, but we're starting to see some anxiety in residential neighborhoods over any, even the slightest, changes.
Historically, that's always been the case. I mean, whether we're dealing with the Y, or Silver Hill, or any one of the schools, there's, when they talk about expansion or modification, adding a building or a parking lot or a driveway, I don't, I've, I'm having a hard time remembering anyone coming from the public to support it. It's always opposition. One other point that might be useful, and this was an issue in Eastern, is there are lands used for watershed owned by internally water companies. They can have various legal statuses as far as the water companies, but there's a good deal of that land in New Canaan, and some detail on exactly how that land is classified. I know there are various classifications. You can't touch it, you can maybe touch it if you have a conversation, and you catch me in a good mood, and the other is, you can probably sell it. And we had even a case, remember, of, was around, it was what is it? Indian Trail was the name. Yeah, Indian Waters, oh, yeah. It was about two dozen acres, I guess, of land, and the issue, it was owned by a water company, private water company, if I remember, it's all in the record. And they wanted to try to develop it. I think the way it ended up was the, I think, the
Budding neighbor.
Budding neighbors purchased it, I think they put it in a conservation easement, anyway, it's owned by the Land Trust now, I think. They donated it, I think. And anyway, it was been preserved in some manner, and so call it surplus property. How that gets disposed of or treated and so on is not a trivial issue for many people, because it's now sort of, it's now open space de facto, it's a forest. And so to the extent that might be subject to development or reuse in some manner, people are interested in that, and exactly how to deal with these potentialities, I think people are going to be interested in.
I can think of three cases where the tax status, where somebody has changed, changes the tax status of the land, like, to farming, to conserves, to whatever, and the neighbors would like to understand, well, can that be unwound? What are the implications if it is unwound, which is the example you're, you're talking about, when water company land becomes something else? But more recently, the Paul Simon, what we call affectionately, the Paul Simon property changed its status, and that was of interest to the neighbors. Because he wanted to make it a farm, and then it was subdivided. So how can you make it a farm, and then in the very next year, you know, it then becomes subdivided? It's very confusing to a lot of these neighbors. It's very confusing to a lot of these neighbors.
I think this is where the, you know, hopefully from this workshop, we can start educating, you know, to help residents understand what zoning is. And what zoning is not, because as an example, the tax status, zoning is step one, but just, just because zoning says, okay. We recognize you as a farm, that doesn't mean the state of Connecticut is going to recognize you as a farm.
Really good lead in to the start of that meeting, zoning is and zoning is not.
Yes, yeah, I think that's actually a good.
When you've got the captured audience on that first October twenty-third date.
We've got.
Minutes on that.
So we skipped to that, though, I just wanted, I had a couple of comments on this project approach. I think, I think grouping the meetings by these categories is great. I think this is ambitious, I mean, I can tell you when we wrote the inclusionary zoning regulations, we probably spent six months of meetings just talking about that. Obviously, you know, we're doing a much bigger thing here, we're not gonna be able to dive that deep. But I do think it's ambitious, I do think that you will have to come, you know, with really good drafts in hand. For us to give you feedback on, so that. We're not gonna be able to craft it together necessarily in these meetings, you're gonna have to have crafted it, and we're gonna have to be giving you.
Yeah.
Feedback if we're gonna go at this pace.
The residents of New Canaan are involved. And I would be surprised that they did not come well-informed and prepared.
These subcommittee meetings are all open to the public, right?
Correct, but I think what BFJ was getting at is that they're gonna be more internal workshops. And then if we find in the process that, you know, residents want to talk after each one. We may have to schedule separate meetings that may or may not involve BFJ, because I think, you know, the, the hope is that we get meetings that aren't focused on public comment. Where we can actually.
But we're not.
Get feedback.
Advertising it as a public workshop, it's an internal subcommittee meeting.
Correct, that, you know, is recorded and is open to the public, but.
Our intention for each of these meetings also is to send you in advance. At least, you know, as much material as you can review ahead of time. I know that you're all very busy, but just so that when the time of the actual meeting comes. You know, we are able to, to, to have actual materials to present to you, and you won't be seeing it for the first time. And we hope that also sort of moves the process along, and whichever way we can to send materials ahead of time.
And then basically, when we're, we're talking here on item three. Is our meetings with you, which would be discussion meetings like tonight. But as we get through those, it'll allow us, and it is ambitious, but it's what's in our contract. It does allow us to get to that second public workshop. Where everybody's gonna be able to see a bigger, you know, a big picture. But they're gonna be all drafts, they're all gonna be initial working, we'll call them a working document. Because nothing will be developed into actual text, final text, I mean, until after that second workshop. And we've got it scheduled for late March, you know, on this. And so we're not seeing an end to this until September two thousand and six. So, but we, you're right, though, Kristy, you, you're right, this is intense work on our part for the next three months. We, we realize that. But then it's gonna be, you've got to go through everything, we've got to have that workshop with the public. We've got to revise things after that, and then there'll be meetings with you, depending on what you've heard, you're gonna go through that text again. So there'll be other chances, other opportunities.
Okay.
What, what we could do then is go to the pub, go to your.
Yeah, let's go to the public workshop portion.
Item three, and, and I think Emily, you're gonna go through that, yeah.
Yeah, so I guess to, to just. Start off on that, we did send a draft press release to Sarah, and she has that, and it's ready to go, it sounds like, to your newsletter and.
It's already been sent to the newsletters.
And local newspapers. So that's ready to get publicized, and then it will also be posted on the town's website. You all have a flyer, a copy of the flyer in front of you. The town should print out additional copies and distribute them. And then we have copies of the presentation, all of you should have a copy of it, so this is what we are planning. At the public workshop, but we are open to discussion right now about if there's anything that you want to change in the contents of it. So we can go through this together.
I think we should just go through it, it's, it's the handout that is stapled once in the upper left.
First slide is just the agenda, so we would be doing a presentation, this is the presentation, giving a project overview. Opportunities for public in, input, doing a zoning.
Sorry, just to cut you off really quick, Tom and Eric on Zoom, do you guys have the presentation? I emailed it to you. If you don't have access.
Yep, yeah, I have the deck. I'm good.
Still helpful to show the screen if you're in it.
Okay. Okay, it doesn't, it doesn't make a difference, I can just pull it up on my computer.
Okay, so yeah, we'd have the zoning primer in there, the one-on-one, we'd go over the existing New Canaan zoning regulations, like a very high-level overview. And then we would go through some of the major things that we've heard so far from all of you, from Sarah and from the initial stakeholder interviews that we've done. Then we would break out into a coffee break, and during the coffee break, we would have. Our ideas to have a few tables in the back or in the hallway that have copies of the zoning regulations on them, in case anyone is interested to actually look at. What's in them, and then we would also print out large boards with your zoning map, so that people can look at, you know, where is my zone, or what is this zone?
Copies of the current zoning regs.
Yes, the current zoning regulations. And just a question on that, I know you guys were updating the zoning map, do you know?
Yeah, so we, we hit the pause button on that, so where, what's posted online is accurate, and I'm just gonna say it that way.
And then the end of the workshop would be for public comments and questions. So that's when everyone has the opportunity to come up and speak and ask questions or provide their comments.
What is your zoning primer?
So after we do team introductions, we would introduce, introduce, introduce all of you, we would introduce ourselves. We would go then through what the, the goal of the project is, so here we just have that. The updated zoning is building on the momentum that you have already from your P O C D and from some of the recommendations within the P O C D. And the idea of zoning update is to guide the new development and redevelopment consistent with what the community's vision and values are, as expressed in the P O C D.
Part of the primer.
Yes, so then we also provide a slide here on the legal framework for how the P and Z has the. Is the legislative body that is authorized to establish and change the zoning regulations in Connecticut. And that zoning regulations must be consistent with the town's plan of conservation and development, so we would explain that. And then on the next page, we would go through what we expect to be the zoning update process. So beginning with the plan of conservation and development that the community has been involved in. And all of the community engagement that you've done for the creation of that plan. The development of the values and goals that are in the P O C D and the vision, and the adoption in twenty twenty-four. Into the draft changes by zoning regulation update subcommittee yourselves. We would explain what your role is, and that, how the community has opportunities to give feedback. And then you would be the ones who are deciding which of those zoning updates are actually going to advance. To, to the actual finalized draft text, and then of course, finalizing changes to the zoning regulations. So it would be referred to the full planning and zoning commission, there would be a public hearing. There would be the final edits, and then there would be a vote on the changes. We would explain a little bit of our process and the project timeline. For this whole work, so we've put together a schedule here that's a little more simplified than the one that you all have that we're going by. Just kind of explain to people that we're starting off with reviewing existing regulations. You know, meeting with people, talking to the users of the code, and we would explain to them that there's going to be two public workshops. The one in October, and then one that will be in the spring of next year, and that they will also have the opportunity to come and speak at the public hearing. Before the adoption of the zoning regulation changes. We would explain other opportunities for public engagement or other ways that we're involving stakeholders. And doing these focus groups with practitioners. We would also explain that there will be an online survey between the two public workshops. We're thinking that the survey would probably launch around January or February after all of the holidays. So that we can bring those insights that we get from the survey back to the second public workshop. We would explain that we'd be drafting the zoning text and map revisions. And that at the second public workshop, they would have the opportunity to review those in advance, so that they can come to that informed and ready to comment on them. And then we would move into the final phase, which would be the zoning text and map revisions, and then the adoption. With again, that public hearing there, where they have another chance to come and provide their input.
Just real quick, I assume you're gonna share this with the public. If so, I would just recommend somehow titling the, the numbers above the dates, because it kind of looks like it's the third of. Over, just something, so there's no.
Yes.
We can remove that, yeah. The number of months.
Yeah, we can take those off.
Yeah, that's not, it's not necessary if we have the.
It was just to mean, it was just to show us a fourteen-month process, we hope.
I'm just so you understand.
I understand that, but.
It'll be obviously in the workshop that they'll share their screen and the public will see this, but we'll also make sure that it's posted on the town's website. So people can follow along and review it afterwards if they can't make the meeting.
The next slide is kind of just recapping all of those opportunities for public and input and engagement throughout the timeline. So from actually being able to get up and speak at the public workshop. To, you know, visiting the New Canaan Town website and seeing information and draft documents that are posted there. To participating in the online survey in the later part of winter, and then. Yeah, the second public workshop.
So you're not actually asking for public input at this point, you're just to, I wouldn't do that.
First workshop.
Would not do that.
Questions and comments at the end.
As soon as you get into public workshop, it's gonna be a shitshow. And, and for the public input, it's gonna, it'll go great for the first fifteen to thirty minutes. And then it'll start to go off the rails, just because everyone's gonna want to get their opinion heard, and, and it'll, it'll go in different directions. I would, I would preempt it with the zoning primer.
Well, we are gonna do the zoning primer first, this is just a slide about how people can get involved.
Later in the process.
That's what I was asking, right.
Oh, oh, yeah, sorry, sorry.
This is the point, yeah, the question and answers when they're actually able to come up and speak would be at the end.
So they go through this whole presentation first.
The agenda in the workshop would be, so on this page, it's, you've got the presentation here. So this is just kind of a recap of when they can get involved and how they can get involved.
That's fine.
Yeah.
It was presentation without questions, break, questions.
Yes.
Presentation, coffee break.
I was impressed that you want to be strict at the beginning regarding, no questions during the presentation.
Questions till after the coffee break.
Just making sure.
That's important.
People are very involved in New Canaan.
Here too, and I, I don't mean to. I'll look at Sarah, but the coffee break's important, actually.
Yeah.
Some people will leave. Other people really concerned will stay, but they've had coffee, they're able to look at the boards, they're able to look at things, it just.
There's actual coffee gonna be there? I'm a tea drinker, so I'm in favor of that, but.
Eric Lee, whatever you want, tea, water.
Allow some of the tension to diffuse.
Have dessert, like, well.
I'm bringing brownies again, I'm bringing my brownies again.
Red Bull for the commissioners. I have, I have killer brownies.
Also Stewart dessert trays we did for the P O C D workshops. We wrote what's what a hot beverage.
Yeah, I, I think it makes the feeling different than a public hearing or, you know. Where you, where you've got, you know, questions from the public on an application. This is longer term, and, you know, we have, have a coffee break and then come back in for what I call just the New England Town Hall Meeting. Q and A, and I feel after people have, have a chance to take a break, they're, they're usually.
Are we gonna set like a, you have three minutes?
Yes. Absolutely.
And I mean, it looks like you've left forty-five minutes for the Q and A, I think we should try and stick to that.
Is it optimistic?
It's optimistic.
Well, I'm, I'm also wondering if we don't, if we, I, I don't know, if we have a whole forty-five minutes of Q and A. Or if we do breakout groups or some way to let people speak, but not stand, stand. I think that's where the time limit comes in, yeah, for instance, yeah.
Now, the second, oh, sorry.
I was just gonna say, two minutes would also probably suffice, I don't know if it needs to be.
I mean, our, my experience, and Sarah can validate this, is when we tell people here two or three minutes. You know, and we'll even, sometimes when we have a really long project, set timers on our phone, you know, there's buzzers going off, and we're like, you're over time. Yeah.
Two or three minutes is like the stop sign on your bicycle, you kind of wave at it while going by, okay? Yep, saw ya.
I mean, I, does it make sense to have like a signup sheet at the beginning, so then, you know, as the presentation's going on, we'll at least. Have an assessment of like, okay, so maybe only ten people want to speak, maybe thirty people.
I, I think where, where that signup sheet could be done is during the break. In other words, during the break, you, if you want to speak later, please sign up, so we know who you are and everything, and just.
And then maybe also have like a comment box, where if you don't want to speak, but you want to have something to say, you know, drop your card in here.
If we don't have a signup sheet, it's whoever speaks the loudest, which is maybe not the best way to choose.
Trying to get the signup sheet.
Probably need a signup sheet anyway, just so I can read down a list of.
Seems a very good idea. Signup sheet.
Do you have, on the website, I think you have your email address there, if people want to submit comments, you're okay with that.
Yep, it's fine.
You, that's her job.
Always does, it always does, that's fine.
But then back to the presentation, what we want to do, Dan, gets back to what you or and John were saying. We want to get into zoning, we just call it a zoning, zoning primer, which is the next slide, then I'll let Emily do this, is to explain to people the basics. Zoning, what is zoning? Kind of thing, go, go, go ahead, Emily.
Yeah, so I think starting from your zoning map, we would just explain, you know, the number of residential districts, commercial districts, what these different colors mean. Just to give people like a sense of like, you know, there are these regulations that apply to the residential districts, there are different ones that apply for these different business districts. This is the reason why these districts have different regulations, like a very brief recap on what the differences are between those zones. And then we would go into actually like what is zoning? So here we just say zoning divides land into districts that determine what uses are allowed. Whether residential, commercial, or industrial, very high level. And then each district also sets the form for what can be built, such as the building size, height, setbacks, and lot area. What zoning is not, so that's exactly what you were asking about earlier, Dan. So zoning is not building code, so it's not construction, it's not structures, it's not mechanical systems. It's not a development plan, it regulates land use, but it doesn't decide on specific projects.
Example. It's one thing to point out those places on the map, but we have something called the magic circle, just want you to be aware of it. I got asked yesterday, for example, about parking in the magic circle. And I said that the magic circle is an area of the downtown. Where building owners are not required to provide parking, because it's provided by the municipality. So if you're in the magic circle, you don't have to provide, and the question was. And the question was, what's gonna happen as we move, as, what, what happens? As the traditional retail on the bottom, offices on the top, change to what we're calling mixed use. Where residential is being encouraged, and we're starting to see applications for residential. What's happening to the parking requirements in the magic circle? And that will that exemption continue? And I said, I don't know, we're rewriting our zoning regulations right now, I'll get back to you on that.
Well, to be clear right now, so magic circle is retail A, and you. We still require retail on the first floor and retail A, obviously, subject to change, as you said. But for now, technically, that's.
But for those apartments, people are saying, oh, do you require the same for the apartments upstairs that you do for the office?
We've allowed apartments on the top floors in retail A for decades.
With no parking.
Correct.
How many apartments are there in retail A?
Not a lot, I know of a handful across the street here. Like six in that building.
And there are a few there, there's the, you know, bank building next door, which is gonna have, what, four?
I guess, that's another question, if, if residents come with questions. Like, is there a game plan about who's answering them or not, like, is that?
Oh, I think you're doing just fine, you just keep answering them.
Keep, I'll be ready.
Keep answering them.
That, if it's a very technical question, probably I would turn to you. On our rules. Generic questions on, you know, what do you mean by, you know, form-based? Perhaps you all would, would handle that.
But I also think that I suspect people will come with specific issues.
Oh, you think?
Property next to my house, this institutional use over here. And I think to the extent we can.
And I think to the extent we can, we need to help them pull up. We're not here to solve your problem with Saint Luke's School that's in your backyard. We're here to talk about institutional zoning as a category. Um, and and some people won't be satisfied with that, and I understand that, and that's, you know, when Sarah's email gets given out. But I don't think we want to let people dominate their two minutes. It won't be useful.
We don't just have zones, we have magic zones.
Yeah, I guess I need the other map, the one with the magic circle and the super square.
We'll take notes on all comments, and so if they don't get answered specifically that evening due to time, you know, you can assure people that we're taking it into consideration as we move through our revisions.
Will will you guys produce a comment list?
Yes, we'll have, we'll make a summary.
We make, we usually make a summary of the workshop.
And then. Okay, I just for just for public disclosure and and, you know, seeing what the comments are overwhelmingly, if it's on a certain topic. I think it would be good at least just for, you know, tracking public comment and public issues.
Yeah, and will this be recorded, Sarah?
Yep, it'll be recorded.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, but we'll write up a summary of, and then you'll have that recording.
Great, which I assume would be on the website.
Yep, the summary, yeah, we'll send it to Sarah to first on the website.
The website would be a um section of the planning.
Town website.
Website.
Yeah, um, it's already on the, yeah.
Yeah, so there's a screenshot of it in your slide presentation. Um, on the slide that says public input and.
So it's already, like, if you go to the town's website and you go to the planning and zoning department, there are a bunch of different links. The top link is zoning reg update twenty twenty-five link.
And that's going to be the, going forward to the, got it. That was my question. Thank you.
Um, so on this slide in particular, why do we need zoning? A couple of things. First, I think this zoning primer, I would actually move this up pretty close to the beginning, like maybe after you introduce the team and give a very high-level overview of what the project is, like that we're updating our zoning regulations. I would start with this and then finish with more of the details of here's our timeline and all of that. Um. And then with this slide in particular, why do we need zoning? I mean, what, everything you've written here obviously is factually accurate. I guess I would get a little more philosophical about it and that zoning prov- provides predictability and consistency in the development pattern so that, you know, things that are built fit into the context of their surroundings and also so that neighbors have a sense of, you know, what will be built next door to them. Um, and that's what helps to stabilize the health, safety, welfare, and particularly the property values that everybody cares about.
Yep.
Um, and I think that it's important to talk about that because, you know, that's what people care about. And we do need that consistency and predictability, but we also don't want to get stuck in that, and that zoning does need to evolve and adapt. So, you know, yes, it does provide this consistency, but it does have to also change over time, which is the process that we're in right now. So you know, let people know that we're aware, that they like, I think a lot of people probably in this town do like the predictability and consistency. I mean, that's why we have sections of our zoning regulations that date back to nineteen thirty-two. Is because people like that predictability and consistency, but we also need to talk about evolution.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, we can do that. We can move the primer up a bit earlier.
Yeah, we cannot.
Yep.
Yeah, and of course, when we do this presentation, we're not gonna like fly through it like.
Yeah, yeah.
But yeah, we'll.
Yeah. Yeah. I think you're right.
Yes.
New Canaan zoning.
New Canaan zoning regulations.
Yeah, it's more of a section header, section to like a divider photo and for the zoning primer.
Oh, no, I just meant for like with the.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we can move it down, yeah.
Yeah, so then the next slide is about the actual regulation. So this is the zoning text. So we would explain that there's a zoning map and there's also the zoning text um that work together. Um, and we would note that the last comprehensive update of the zoning regulations was in two thousand and seven and that some sections, as you've just mentioned, have remained unchanged for decades. Um, some of, some smaller, you know, surgical changes have been made more recently, um, depending on changing laws and other um needs. Um, but that there is a lack of a coordinated approach and that is the purpose of doing this um kind of uh overarching zoning update at this point.
You will get questions in some of these. So some of them may say, you said that New Canaan is a, does not have a coordinated approach. What do you mean by that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Work.
So we have an inefficient application process. How come this has been going on so? Someone may ask.
They will ask.
Because we've had so many applications.
I'm I'm concerned about, I think this, and then there's a bullet point on the next slide. It both seem to be more, as the first bullet point, seem to be more opinion than stating facts and goals. You know, I don't want, I don't want this to come into it being this is the opener for the public to limit the scope of questions and thoughts and goals that the public might have in terms of, you know, what we can do with our regulations. I mean, you saying lack of coordinated approach and, you know, leads to a piecemeal development plan, you know, well, no, I don't agree with that, right? So I I could say that, somebody else could say that. And, you know, to say on the next page in particular that, you know, the the regs are well organized. It almost says, well, they're well organized. So, you know, we're, the scope of what we're doing is is preordained to be limited. And I don't think we want to, in our initial presentation to the public, just shut down the possibility, you know, if if it comes into the future in six months that that we say, well, no, you know, some of these proposals are a bridge too far, then let us do that. But I don't want in the initial um, you know, rollout of this to to already kind of tone down what the the possibilities are for, you know, changes in regulations.
We can change that last bullet point.
That was taken from the R F P, so we're happy to change anything else.
Yeah, we'll change it.
Bullet point, I'm not sure it works.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can.
And then, yeah, same for, same for on the next page, that that first bullet.
Next page, especially the third bullet there.
With the the third and the first.
Uh, okay, the next page, um, where we have the table of contents of the zoning regs. Um, you're saying that third dot point need to update sections.
The the first point.
Oh, the first point, zoning regulations are well organized.
It's it's opinion. I don't, I don't think we want.
That's correct. It is our, it is our opinion.
Yeah.
It is our opinion that they're well organized. Is it all right to say that it's our opinion or in our, in our experience of zoning regulations in Connecticut, you have a fairly well organized one?
I prefer we don't because, you know, I've even been starting to dig through and I see, you know, a number of of big issues that make my head spin. Um, and again, I don't want, you know, for us to come out and say, you know, we think these are are well organized. It's a, I think it would have a chilling effect on some people who.
Why would you say that?
Because if they already think that this is well organized, what if I disagree that it's well organized? If, where is the town coming out with a presentation saying that, then I have less of a impetus to say my piece if it seems that we're already coming out with this opinion.
Yeah, I see.
For before the public has made a comment either way. And I don't think, and I think, and I, and like I said, I think in the future, if we want, if there are some ideas that come out of this that are, you know, above and beyond what we want to do, then that's our prerogative to, you know, limit that and scale it back and be more conservative. But I don't want to come out and chill those ideas in the initial meeting, in the initial public, you know, opening of this um process.
When I look at these three points, I would drop the first one. The second one can be restated into the, like, the goal is to make the document as user-friendly as possible. No one's gonna argue with that one. Uh, third bullet point, ensure the various sections integrate well together. No one's gonna argue with that one either, and I think that's what we want to do anyway. So it's a little, I think it's to be clear on exactly what we're trying to do because I I I want to make it more of a look forward than a look back. You know, what are you trying to accomplish here? And I think that's what people who come want to know is what are you gonna do?
Yeah.
So what's changing?
I think that goes back to, and I can, um, I think it's put on the website, but let me confirm, you know, when we, I think when they voted on the R F P, we made like a list of ten goals that we hope to, you know, achieve. So if maybe integrating that into this rather than these six kind of random bullet points, just to make it, you know, clear as day. This is, you know, this is what we want to do. This is what we voted on months ago.
Um, it's in the public record.
Yeah, I I'd rather it be an aspirational set of bullet points than say, well, we're okay here, so don't worry about the organization, worry about the other stuff. Because maybe that's one person's opinion, but that's not, you know, another organization or group or or whoever's opinion in terms of, you know, looking at this. I don't want to foreclose that before we even get going.
That's a good way to do it. I think we can state, hey, what was in the request for a proposal? Here are the ten goals for the zoning. Okay, yeah. All right.
And then we just wanted to show the table of contents here just to kind of give people an idea of where things are found in the code. So if they do want to go during the coffee break and check out the copy of it, they kind of get a sense of, okay, there's a section on residence zones, a section on business zones, a section on special zones.
So I would maybe just on um slide eighteen, flip residential and business zones because the residential zones are first.
Okay, in the code.
Yep.
So then the following um slides, uh, starting from eighteen where uh Sarah was just pointing to, these are some of the um issues that we've heard from you so far. Um, and we just tried to pick kind of the big ones that uh were jumping out at us. So for, um, I guess we could start with residential and if we're switching it, um, considering options for two-family homes in the B res area. Um, studying what requires special permits for accessory uses. Um, we have in the summary document that we'll go through after this, we do have a um printout of all those um different, um, you know, variances and uh special permit. Yeah, so um that, and then for business zones, streamlining the commission permitting process, expanding permitted uses, and combining some of the zones.
Expand committed uses is gonna generate a reaction. Like, what do you mean by that?
I'll give you an example. So it's probably going back eighteen years and probably three commissioners uh or yeah, and three predecessors of yours, but it was the Zone D controversy and what Steve Kleppen, who was your predecessor, you know, Steve Kleppen? All right, so so ask Steve Kleppen about Zone D. So Zone D came in the most innocent way where they said, you've got a zone here, mostly Grove Street, and it has identified a bunch of uses that are now obsolete. So we're going to clean that up, right? Just like we're talking about cleaning up and we're going to update the permitted uses up in the, in the, in the Zone D. And the argument that came from the magic circle was that for a hundred years, we've intentionally concentrated the retail and a lot of this activity in the retail zone. And what you're doing is you're diluting the magic circle by creating this Zone D. And so it was, became very controversial, what started off as a cleaning up of old and obsolete. You've got the same challenge in front of us right now where you've got light industrial use down there on the cross in V D. And a lot of that land has been collected by one building owner who's saying, now, you know, uh, what are my options going forward with respect to this cross in V D? And I've, and I've seen in the newspaper, plans proposed by the town in the last twenty years for the reimagining of the cross in V D as not a light industrial zone. So none of this comes without controversy. When we improve a zone or update a zone, is it at the expense of another zone? Is it at the expense of the concentration, the purposeful concentration of a retail zone that make this a central village, unlike the spread out Darien, the spread out Westport? So I think Steve Kleppen, if you know him, would be very helpful in telling you some of the pitfalls of the Zone D. Uh, I think Zone D.
Is Business B, if you're talking about Cross and V D, Cross and V D is Business B, though.
No, I'm talking about Zone D, which is Grove.
Okay, yeah, that study never got.
Conflating my two examples, I'm conflating two examples of just.
Study got left on the shelf.
D?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, D failed because of of.
Well, there was staff changing, right? Right as that study was completed.
Yeah.
So just examples.
Happened to have been the planner when we did the municipal facilities study.
Yep. I mean, perhaps it would be helpful to provide, you know, in parentheses, a couple of examples of what we mean by expand permitted uses on the actual slide, rather than just speaking to them.
Yeah, I mean, it could just even be clarify because I know like, one of my goals is, you know, there's a lot of confusion about like Crafty Kids, as an example, that just opened right next to Town Hall. No clue how to characterize that. It was, you know, challenging, and then there were issues with the landlord because, well, is this a permitted use or not? It's just clarifying and, you know, helping businesses, so it's.
We we had an applicant ask for Zoom rooms, and we said, oh, that's not a Zoom room. I don't know if that's really um a retail use. Now, it's since been changed to a retail storefront, but I mean, we don't know how to address that kind of thing. Crafty Kids and Zoom rooms.
I like Sarah's idea of.
A Zoom room was was originally proposed on Burtus.
Yeah. That's what they wanted to do for those little mini.
Retail space downstairs.
Yeah, which.
And I raised my hand. I said, I don't think that's.
No, that's.
My comment was, they do it in Brooklyn. Our comment was, you're not in Brooklyn.
Yeah.
But um, yeah, you're gonna get some um reaction because I'll I'll pose the question to you. I want you to name a town of twenty thousand people with no strip development. Name one.
Us.
I can name some, but at the top of my head, but.
Sag Harbor.
They're not here in Connecticut.
Not a lot of them.
There's not a lot.
This is one of them, and people really like the downtown. It is highly walkable, it is beloved, and it is heavily defended.
By the way, I think we, I I can understand a little, I personally have been planners, our firm has, and I personally have been for Bronxville in Westchester County. I don't know if you know the village of Bronxville. It's a planned community. It has no strip, long strip commercial at all. It's got, it's got its confined downtown. And all the things you're mentioning, those have been issues. Those have been issues. We're kind of, not that we're used to it, but we're, but we're, we're sensitive, we'll try to be sensitive to it. It's, it's probably Westchester's finest village. Scarsdale wouldn't like my saying that.
Do we need to add a slide? Maybe that's also like, you know, we have our goals and then do we also need to have a slide that's like, what we're not trying to do and just address some of the bigger things?
It's negative. I don't want, again, I don't, I don't know if we want to limit that, right? Let, you know, maybe, maybe expand permitted uses is not the right term, and maybe it's clarifying, refine, or something, you know, if expand is gonna be too much of a lightning rod to begin with. But again, I I don't, I don't think that in an initial meeting, it is good to say no to things before we even heard what the public has, comes out and says. If they come out and say no, then then that's kind of, you can take that as guidance, but to to do an initial meeting and say no upfront to X, Y, Z, again, I think is not, not beneficial to figuring out where we want to land on this.
That makes sense.
I want to hear what the people say is no. Yeah, frankly, and with their input.
Yep.
This is why we're doing this.
I mean, part of this seems to me to be planning and part of it is regulations, you know, and so I think it's just important to make a distinction of that. Like, in some respects, we're trying to clean up the regulations. In other cases, we're trying to plan forward, you know, for the Business B, the Zone D, you know, and 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 so we are trying to unapologetically make changes to anticipate what the future, you know, is bringing. So there's a planning component, not just a regulation component.
Yeah, that's where the P O C D.
Yeah, I was gonna say, in that respect, I would just reference that we're trying to implement what we said.
The P O C D.
We're not planning now. We did the planning. We're implementing.
No, this is the planning and zoning portion of implementing the P O C D, you know, where you have to say, okay, well, I I don't think we're disagreeing.
Yeah, I think we're on saying the same thing, just different words.
I agree.
Okay. And then Emily, you might want to do that next page on special, special zones.
So special zones, uh, what we heard is simplifying special zones, so, you know, eliminating some of the ones that don't apply anymore, like the aquifer protection overlay zone, and then maybe uh, simplifying some of the um specific zones that you have for the different um housing developments, like the Millport and Canaan Parish zones. Um, reassessing the inclusionary zoning um policy to understand its effectiveness. Uh, consider creating an overlay zone for institutional uses. Um, and then uh, I guess this is different, but on the same slide, we have environmental requirements, so implementing impervious surface limits and our green space. And we would explain what impervious surface limits and.
I would be surprised if there are not questions regarding what do you mean by overlay zone for institutional uses and what does that mean?
I was gonna ask the same question.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, I think. Um, I mean, I think, I think what that, you know, comes into, I think I, I don't know if I'm the one that threw out that idea. But right now in our zoning regulations, technically tomorrow, any one of you could go and apply to build a private school on your property. Um, and so having, instead of it being allowed in a residential zone, you make it only allowable in an um, overlay zone. That means you have to rezone to become eligible to do it. Or in, on an existing school or an existing other institutional use, you either have to, you know, change your zone to now change something on your property. So it's, it's all about adding more consistency and more measures for residential properties. So instead of it just being now, oh, you know, sky's the limit, I just go change the zoning regulations to get what I want on my institutional property. We have a clear zone. These are the standards. Yes, you can apply to change your zone, but it makes it stricter and more clear for residents about what institutional uses can and can't do. And that's what the idea is.
If, if that was in place twenty years ago, would it have prevented the creation of a new institution, a new institutional use like Grace Farms on what had been a residential neighborhood? Or the field club? I mean, is it prevent some, it, it from changing? Or the country club, or, you know, or anything? Is it?
It's all a function of how it's written, you know, if, I think the intent, you know, in the, you know, twenty, thirty years ago, or whenever some of these things were built, is you wanted those things on large parcels of land. And so, um, it doesn't necessarily prohibit that from happening in the future. It's all about how you write the regulation. If you want it to say, no new property, unless it's thirty acres or larger, can, you know, rezone to this overlay. Then maybe, but I don't, I, I don't think you could say that it would prevent it, unless you wrote it in a way that prevented it, you know?
Purposes of this slide, I think overlay zone might be, I think it's a good point that it might be a use of jargon that we want to avoid if people won't understand it. So, um, no, one of the, one of the suggestions Sarah had given us in the summary packet for the institutional uses is consider creating intentional and uniform standards for the various institutional uses. Um, to avoid one-off text amendments, but maybe something focusing on intentional and uniform standards for intention, for institutional uses, rather than saying an overlay zone, just so that, you know, the layperson could understand that better.
Well, I like that better, because it doesn't foreclose some, doing something that's not, but when you say zone, right? And, and Dan, you said this in the past, that, you know, when you think of zone, you think of map and people have a, you know, they throw their hands up when you, you want to change the map. And so to the extent, you know, the, the, the wording you just used, that, that means there's other options in terms of, you know, writing into text in a certain way, or, or, you know, not, not, you know, putting a zone up wherever there's a, you know, a, an institutional use in a, in a different kind of discreet location.
That bullet point should potentially go under the residential zone, just because we only allow institutional uses in residential zones right now.
Sure, yeah, we can admit that.
Do you want examples of all these? Should we be emailing you so that? I mean, I'm, I'm thinking about four examples right off the bat.
If you have examples we can speak to while we're presenting this, I think that would be helpful.
For example, for example, a school administration building on the corner of South Avenue and Farm Road was proposed twenty years ago. And an instant, and a, and a group came up, hands off waving, and said, I know it was originally designated for school use, but we do not want you carving out a portion of the woods to put a school administration building, and it was defeated. The mulch pile, south of the Blapham Road, has been identified every five years as a great place for senior citizens and, and everything else. So the mulch pile. You have right now.
C C R C, they want to put a C C R C up.
That's what I, that's what I said, senior housing. Now, because you have transit oriented development, you have the Talmadge Hill Station, a lot of people are eyeing the, what, six acres of town owned land in a residential neighborhood, close to the Talmadge Hill Station? And saying, oh, is that now, uh, at, what's the word? Where I want to use delicate, at risk of changing from a residential use to, um, just because it's close to the Talmadge Hill Station, uh, and Talmadge Hill parking lots. Shall I keep going? But you, you get the idea. Oh, the, our last first selectment said, hey, why don't we put a, the police station, um, where the ball fields are on South Avenue, because South Avenue, you know, clearly a state highway, most appropriate place to put a police station. And the townspeople came out and said, no, it's most important as one of the entrances into New Canaan, off of the Mayor Parkway. It's where most people experience New Canaan first, and we want them to have woods to the left and fields to the right. You know, when you come into town, no new buildings on South Avenue. So all of these things get, get proposed for additional institutional use and, um, and they, each one has become controversial.
And with our zoning regulations right now, I'll use municipal and public schools as an example. The sky is the limit in the residential zones. It's allowed via special permit, and there's no coverage limit.
Allowed by special permit.
But again, if you meet the special permit criteria, you can build what you want. And so I'm just saying, you know, right now, it's allowed, it's unlimited coverage. Allowed, so you know, do we, the intention in my mind is, do we need to put more guardrails so it's clear to residents what is and isn't allowed?
Yeah, you said overlay zone.
But I think simplifying it as was just stated, for the purposes of this meeting makes sense. Yeah.
Boy, complex language. You're speaking to civilians.
Way most communities.
But in introducing an overlay zone for institutional uses, are we then identifying the existing institutional uses as the only overlay zones? Available or, or permitted as institutional in a residential zone?
Potentially.
And everything else.
Yeah, but I mean, in, in theory, if you crafted it a certain way, it wouldn't stop, maybe if there were a twenty acre parcel from rezoning or something.
Just thinking through that further, all of, I think everyone was here with the, uh, um, St. Luke's garage or, you know, ball field application. What came to light is St. Luke's been, they've been gobbling up properties on the east side of the campus currently, residential properties. So theoretically, we could put an overlay zone that doesn't include those residential properties.
Yep, you could.
Same thing with Silver Hill.
Same thing with Silver Hill. The, the, the issues in my experience that tend to generate, um, heightened public interest are not only the, the creation of institutional use, but you have one institutional use that goes from this big to that big. And also an intensification of use within the current footprint, which means you go up generally. Those tend to generate, um, again, public interest, not only because of loom and, and noise perhaps, but also traffic. Some of these are very high traffic areas. And, um, I would just suggest that, um, this topic will be brought up by residents.
Oh, yeah. I think what Sarah said, I'm picking up from, it sounds like your current special permit that allows institutional uses, if I heard Sarah correctly, doesn't control something like coverage.
For certain uses.
Because that's unusual. In other words, the, the, the way that most towns do it actually, control institutional uses is they are special permits, but they're very limited in the special permit. Coverage is covered, height is covered. You, you really examine what you want in terms of that special permit, how those are controlled. The other way is, is specific overlay, you know, specific overlay approach. So there's, there's kind of, it sounds like your special permit approach is not working.
Well, we keep baking text changes into it.
Yeah.
Relaxing the rules. So it's because we don't have clear rules. So let's, let's make clear rules.
Clear rules.
So you have clear rules, that's the other option.
To the extent you, you have a, um, institutional use and you say, uh, there's only so much coverage you can have, which limits what you can build. You only make it so high, which limits how much you can put in a building.
Right.
You buy, you, you end up with a limit on usage of that property. There's only so much real estate that becomes usable, that exists and is usable to an extent. So.
Well, for instance, take a, um, a school or a church, depends on what their needs are. They'd have to have enough land. If we set coverage, most special permits set coverage. If you set coverage for it, um, and you set height, um, that essentially sets the F A, the floor area. And they would have to have enough property to actually meet that. Depends on how big they want to build. The bigger they want to build, the more property they need.
So it's, uh, we don't currently, um, use F A Rs.
No, and I mean, isn't.
I'm not suggesting you need F A Rs. What controls?
We keep altering.
Well, I mean, so for instance, a middle school really can't comply with the coverage of a residential zone and does not comply with.
But so, again, public schools and municipal buildings.
Are exempt.
Unlimited coverage, they could.
Yeah.
They're currently.
They could build out that whole.
Aren't they exempt from your zoning code? Aren't you exempt from your own code? Or do you can, do you control them? Some codes say municipal uses are exempt from the code.
We don't specifically say that, but we, municipal uses are allowed in every zone and they're exempt from coverage. So, so basically.
Yeah, because if you don't exempt them, then if you have a special permit, you can control coverage. You can control height. You can control all of the area involved, uh, for that special permit.
That this could arise, because remember, it was the possibility of a, another fire station has been broached by the fire chief and the fire marshal, as memory serves. And it's got to go somewhere. I know definitely be a municipal building.
Or another school.
Or another school.
Or another school. Yes, ma'am.
In the wetlands. Another school, um, especially a school, I mean, a fire station could be relatively small. It tend to be noisy, because they may leave with their sirens on at any hour of the day or night. And I think people know that, schools, those are very high traffic issues. That would be a, um, matter that would generate a significant amount of public interest.
So then going back to the bullet point in the deck, I like, I mean, I, I like the suggestion that was, um, I can, I don't know if it was Emily or, or somebody else who said it, but I like the, the suggested language that was.
Yeah, yeah, we can change the language so that it's a little bit more general, as, as Sarah. Okay. Uh, and that is our last slide before the coffee break. By the way, you've given me an idea though, when you discussed, um, maybe there might be a slide saying after the coffee break, here's how the, uh, here's how the session would be run. Take a coffee break to sign up, to sign in. Uh, everybody will be granted three minutes if you want to, you know, if you set a limit on it. I, I think it makes sense to give some ground rules.
Yeah.
We have one slide that gives those ground rules.
Yeah.
That's a good idea. Yes, I, that's, that's wise. I agree with that. You guys are going to be emceeing this whole thing, right?
You can emcee it if you like, or sometimes, but it's up to you. I'm very happy to emcee it. I, I like public back and forth. Or sometimes the chair will emcee it, but, uh, we're flexible, we're totally flexible. I'm, I'm comfortable, uh, or you may want to do.
Happy to let you steer.
Um, Sarah, to answer your question, two or three minutes, I think I would wait and see how many names you have on that list.
Okay, so we won't have it up on the screen. You know, to like, if we're going to have a slide with rules.
Yeah, you're right, you're right. I would, the signup list to speak, I was thinking, you know, if you have five people, then, you know,
It doesn't matter.
Five minutes, but if you have twenty people, then you get two minutes, but I guess.
Even if it's five people, it's going to be three minutes each.
Okay.
So are we doing three?
Three minutes is fair.
If you do two minutes, you might be restricting your.
Yeah, what we usually do is say.
You have five minutes.
Minutes.
So maybe say two minutes and let three minutes.
My big clock with the push button.
If you have a clock.
Bring a bell.
It's a good idea. The microphone turn off.
If you.
Why you just like the president with the face?
Even if you have five people and with three minutes apiece, that generates, hey, I'm going to respond to that. And you'll have other people standing up, I think.
Well, they'll have to put their name on the list. Okay, and we're going to also, we're going to also ask that people, as they come up, they're not, not going to be, um, duplicating comments, right? So if, if person number one gets up there and talks about institutional uses, we don't want person number five coming up and reciting the same thing all over again.
So is that where, do we want to do a comment box as well?
Yes, separate comment box.
Yeah, I'll have a lot of business cards to hand out with my email.
Little index cards, write your comments down, stick them in the ballot box.
Three minutes is, is pretty good. And sometimes what I see at meetings is that, that gives everybody a fair chance, everyone to speak. And then if someone feels like, it's up to you. Uh, if someone feels, hey, I didn't have an adequate opportunity, at the end, after everyone spoke, spoken, then you could hear that person for another three minutes.
Or they can send an email.
Just a thought, but just a thought, but instead of a comments box and everything else, uh, would it be possible to just add a Q R code to the presentation or to the paperwork that's out there? That someone can just scan the Q R code and then either during the meeting or after the meeting, or the next day, they can submit a comment directly to that.
Actually, yeah, I was at a conference today that had, um, during the presentation, there was a Q R code where people could scan it and then submit a question. And then at the end, the M C went through the questions that were submitted by the.
Toriing those comments later, much easier. It'll come through as an Excel spreadsheet or whatever.
We can do a Q R.
I think we should have the paper back up just to be accessible in the event.
Some people, yes.
Someone not with a smartphone or something like.
Yep. One of the things we did with the P O C D is they had, you have, um, poster boards up on, for up to one of the topics, business zones, residence zones, affordable housing, uh, institutional uses with post-it notes. People can scribble them on and stick them on. People can see what others are saying and say, oh, yeah, I, I, now I want to say something because I saw something that triggered me. It could be useful, it's a little colorful and kind of hands-on.
You could that many times what we try to do on this, you know, this sort of what I call again, a New England town meetings, just to say, what we're trying to do in this first workshop is just let people know, what is it that we're doing? You know, what is it that we're trying to do and get their overall comments and impressions? But in the second workshop, where we have the details of things, that's where we want to have roundtable discussions, boards, stickies.
Good, good point.
The whole, the whole detail, that's where we use the, use it to, because people coming don't have enough information yet. So.
But so it sounds like for this three minute timer on the signup sheet, Q R code, small comment box, just in case someone can't use the Q R code. Dan's bringing his big clock.
And John's bringing the brownie.
I'll bring bells and I'll bring a bell and brownies. I'm going to bring my Flavor Flav clock.
Oh, you wear it around your neck?
I will, I'm going to wear it around my neck.
You're too young to know the flavor of flavors. The flavor of love, have you seen it?
And that was item three. Our final item, we don't want to take, is i- item four on, you know, we have a set of deliverables for you. And maybe that's the one Suzanne.
Yeah, sure. So, um, as the conclusion of task one point two in the contract in the timeline, we had a set of deliverables that we promised to you all. Um, and so we wanted to take a moment to go through them. We sent them to Sarah. Um, and I think she's had a chance to look over them initially, but you know, they're still in draft form and we want to get your feedback. Since they're pretty.
So sent to them.
Oh, they're sent to you. Okay, that's great. Since they're pretty, um, detailed, we don't expect to get into all of the details tonight. And that's also part of the reason why we set the specific topics as part of the project approach. But tonight we wanted to go through each of the deliverables that we've provided so far. And then also we can briefly, um, review a summary of comments. And you know, this obviously doesn't capture everything. Um, but, but we can, you know, it's a place to start. So, um, the first item on the, and I can actually share my screen with each of the deliverables.
Which deck are you looking at?
Which agenda or, um, so this is on the B F J agenda, the item four is deliverable.
Item four is deliverable.
I understand. Which, are we looking at one of the handouts?
Oh, um, so no, first, uh, first you can look at my screen here. Um, the first item which was provided to you is the annotated zoning regulations. Um, and there's about two hundred fifty comments on the zoning regulations. Um, the intention here was to go through really line by line as much as possible and, um, comment what we've heard so far from the commissioner comments. This is an example of what it looks like, um, as well as Emily commented, um, where there's elements that, um, you know, maybe don't coordinate with the recent legislative changes that we want to review with the town attorney. Um, as well as, uh, I, we've met with the town engineer as well. Um, so pretty much all the comments we've received so far, along with our, some of our preliminary thoughts. Um, so from you all, the subcommittee, Sarah. Sarah, um, in our initial meeting and some other supplemental materials she provided, and then also with our, uh, the town. Um, engineer, we compiled all of these comments into this document. And the intention is, um, you know, as we go through each of the. Uh, each of the topics at the meetings, we're making sure to reference back to this, make sure none of the details get lost. Um, we can obviously add to this as it goes along, but this is really sort of a compilation, compilation of. All of the comments we've heard so far, annotated where they are in the code. Um, so you can take a look at this in your own time, I don't think it makes a ton of sense to go through it line by line. But we put together a summary of some of the key takeaways that we could review with you now. Um, in the annotated zoning regulations. As I mentioned before, there's the review of state legislative changes affecting zoning. Um, and the review of staff and, and zoning Z R U feedback, so all of those are located within the annotated regulations. Um, if we can turn to the summary now and then we can end with the diagnostic report. So all of you should have this document here, that's called summary of comments, yeah.
It was all sent as well, Eric and Tom, you should have it in your email as well.
Um, so. I don't know how familiar you are with this. This document, but we can go through, um, you know. Broad strokes of each item and. Obviously, there's things that have been in the specific, in the annotated zoning regulations that aren't captured here. But this is sort of a first pass as what we see as some of the biggest issues. So, um, Emily, do you wanna introduce with the legal compliance and statutory updates?
Sure, so, um, this, there's actually like a bigger backend list of all of this, there's a lot, there's been a lot going on. Um, in the past several years, and there's actually some things in here that I found that, um. Weren't updated in the past several years, but still didn't seem to be right in new Canaan zoning, so that's something we'll wanna talk to the attorney about as well. Um, but some of the examples are, you know, um, the, the way that the state, uh, uses the word character has changed. So that might be something that, uh, we wanna change throughout, um, the regulations. Um, there are new statutory goals of what zoning is intended to actually, um, be doing, what the purpose of zoning is. So we might wanna look at like the preamble of your zoning and, um, uh. The introduction sections to make sure that, um, your goals are aligning, um, with those, um, if that's what, um, you want. Um. Then there's some more specific things like, um, this one that Krista brought to our attention was the electric vehicle, um, charging requirements. Um, so something that's more specific like that, um. This one, uh, Public Act twenty-one, one twenty-one is also a very specific one, that's just changing, basically just changing who you have to. Um, report to or, or notify when, um, doing a development in a, um, a watershed. Um, so there's, there's all kinds of, um, regulations, uh, I don't wanna get into all of them. There's also, um, the next bullet point down that says state law allows municipalities to consider new optional zoning regulations. There's been a lot of things that, um, are not currently in your code. So, um, we haven't added those comments onto the annotated document unless there was an opportunity to. Um, but there are, you know, opportunities for, um, middle housing, T D R, um, changes in cluster subdivisions. Um, uh, things that you can explicitly incentivize, um, through zoning that relate to sustainability. Um, and a lot more, um, listed here, so if any of those are, um, jumping out, uh, to you, we can talk about those, um, more.
T D R is transfer of development rights?
Yes, yes, thank you, um. And historic properties establishment, um, procedure, that one, um, I just flagged because it's. Uh, seems like something that the historic commissions, um, should be the ones authorizing, but.
Just from my, the understanding with the T D Rs, how do they, how does it, how is it done in Connecticut municipalities? What's the, is it a, is it a special permit process, is it an as-of-right process, what, what typically do you see?
So, uh, the main change that happened in the regulations is that there can be intermunicipal, um, T D Rs now. So that was kind of the regulatory, um, change about it, New Canaan currently doesn't have any kind of transfer of development rights program. Um, the idea of transfer of development rights would be, um, a circumstance where, you know, you extinguish development rights on a certain property. And then allow additional, um, development rights to be put on another property, um, within a certain area, um, so. Uh, I.
But I guess is about my question is, is it, are these, are these, is it a, in, in, in the New York world, it's, it's an as, there's an as-of-right process. But there are also options for, you know, special permit or other sort of special approval processes. Um, you know, from lot to lot, right, you're, you're limiting the amount of square footage you can build on one lot, you know, and then transferring it to another one. Um, is, is it usually run? Through, and I don't know how much option, you know, what we have, we can do in, in New Canaan, but do, is it? Do you usually see a planning and zoning commission have to, you know? Approve every single transfer, or do you see mechanisms where it's just, you know, Sarah signs off because we've written it into the code that it can be done? You know, pursuant to an as-of. Sort of.
What I see more in Connecticut, I mean, we're very used to it also because we've written some of them in New York City, but. What we see in Connecticut is T D R is, is reviewable by you, the P N Z, and it's usually a special permit process. So, and we don't see it in many, that many communities, actually. Uh, most suburban communities don't have it. But it is, it is something that, you know, as Emily says, state law allows. We're not, we're not suggesting this necessarily, uh, we're not, you know. I, I don't know if you have a need for it or you would want it, but, uh, it is something that state law allows.
Yeah, and I could send you the specific like citations from the statutes, so you could understand more of what, um, that is actually related to what they're actually. Um, permitting municipalities to do with it.
I think the new thing here is, and I haven't seen this happen much at all. And that's a T D R. From one municipality to another. And the one thing I think the state wouldn't wanna see is a T D R in affordable housing from one municipality to another. They wouldn't wanna see that. Um, but I, I think this is something that. It's entirely up to you, I don't see, I would defer to you, I, I don't see, uh, particular reason to do it here.
I personally don't either, I think if anything. It would be more like a cluster subdivision type.
Yeah, cluster, I, I think what you'd want here is a cluster subdivision, if you don't have a cluster.
We don't.
It would be nice to, if you.
So for cluster subdivisions, you have separate subdivision regulations from your zoning regulations.
Yeah, which we do. Yeah, which isn't really this purview, yeah.
Don't know if you'll get into that one.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I just, just for my, it was just for my information, and the other one that I think actually like more relevant is this. Says use of vehicle miles traveled and trips generated for traffic impact assessments. What is that?
So that one is about, so when you do, um, like an environmental study on the impacts of a new development. Um, right now, I think in your code, it, this one is flagged in the annotated, um, document. But in your code, you use vehicle miles traveled to understand the trips generated and to do like a traffic impact assessment. Now the state is saying that in addition to that, or instead of that, you could actually use, um, vehicle mile, oh, sorry. Vehicle mile traveled instead of, um.
Yeah.
Level of service.
Yeah, the way normal traffic studies have always been done.
Level of service.
Level of service. This is just A through F. Now, level of service A is very good. Uh, F is failing, E is usually said to be capacity. So it goes A through F and.
Yeah, but doesn't. Use of vehicle miles traveled and trips generated, doesn't that lead to level of service? That informs a level of service definition.
Yeah, what vehicle miles traveled, uh, versus trip generator, level of service, vehicle miles traveled is gonna give you. Less of an impact on a development. So it's, you know, I'm, I'm not. I'm not sure we need to get into that in zoning, that's usually a site plan issue for you.
That is in their zoning regulation, so it is flagged in the location of your zoning regulation, so.
These are intended to be a sort of menu of options.
Yeah, so we would probably talk about that one when we, uh, talk about, I think that's under the. Uh. The last, um, committee meeting. Um, under the project approach, probably would be those kind of, um, things.
These are all permit things, so you don't really have to, I'm, I'm not sure we have to, for instance, T D R, we don't have to get into it all, if you don't think that's. Um, so it's, it's not something that most Connecticut communities do. But we can get into it at the end.
So the next. Item on here, the site plan approval and special permit process, so this is really intended to be overarching throughout the code. Um, we heard from you all that there's, you know, overuse, a lot of the planning and zoning commission's time is eaten up by these. Permitting approvals, um, and if there's ways to create less triggers for site plan approval and special permits. But also, um, discuss ways to hone in on the criteria and make it more effective. So those two things go hand in hand, um, you know. Looking at the triggers and then also discussing the criteria for site plan approval and special permits. Uh, the next item on here is residential.
I, I just emphasized, this is something we got also from listening to you at the last meeting. You, I, I, I think you wanted to look at. Whether, um, you know, some site plans, some issues could be handled by staff. And you also wanted to limit, I think, the number of special permits, that was before you, that's what I gathered, so this, this comes out of our meeting with you.
What was, what was the, um, the comment that Ira and Pete made a few months ago about special permits about? We shouldn't even be using special permits?
No, so there are certain instances where. Um, which we fixed some of them, but, um, where we use special permits and it's not clear. Why it requires a special permit, so it almost seems like a variance, so like. The structure in a front yard or the accessory structure over a thousand square feet in building coverage, it's. We need to tweak those because it's not really clear why it's a special permit, so.
Should be doable.
Okay, um, and at the end of this document is a summary of the site plan approvals and variances, um, of recent application. So we can talk through that at the end, um, so the next item, residential zones, accessory uses and structures. Uh, we heard it's important to reevaluate what triggers permits, things like pool houses, courts, batting cages. Uh, this has become of particular note, um, post-COVID, um, or during COVID, when people, uh, started building more recreational. Structures at home and spending more time with their homes. Um, we talked about the possibility of creating a maximum size for accessory structures, um, to sort of limit the scope of what can be built. Uh, and then the, a, a discussion, um.
We don't, again, it's just over a thousand square feet, you need a special permit, there's no upper limit, though.
That's right.
Um, and then another discussion is on accessory dwelling units, so if they should be allowed as of right in large lot zones. Um, and then also there's other regulations that can come with that, such as additional side yard setback requirements. Um, which we can, we can take a look at when we get to the residential zones. Um, the next item is the dimensional standards, so we wanna make sure that the building coverage formulas and setbacks are working the way intended. And that they're, um, you know, uh, ensuring. The attractive and the favorable type of development that you're looking to encourage through these regulations. Um, we also talked with the town engineer about adding an impervious surface maximum. And or, and or open space minimum, and that ties back also to stormwater absorption, um, and environmental standards.
Many people are very sympathetic to this.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've run into two ways to. As we, we discussed with Sarah and the engineer. We've had a. Long and lengthy and, uh. Discussion of impervious surface in Scarsdale. Which, uh, led us to go to a minimum open space standard, the, the opposite of impervious. You know, an, an open space standard will create the same. Effect.
Result.
End result, and in, and not saying this would happen here, I think your engineer's. Okay with the impervious surface definition, so.
I know, I know her take though, initially is that doing an open space requirement seems more positive than saying there's an impervious coverage limit. Because residents may find it easier to buy into, yeah, of course I want my neighbor's yard to be forty percent landscaped, I want mine to be forty percent landscaped, you know? So that may be easier to.
We, we've done these before, and we define open space as true open space, landscaped, open to the air. Yeah, no tenant, no courts, they don't, anything, any, no sidewalks, any. Driveways.
Grass soccer fields in the back.
Yeah, it's gotta be truly open space, and we do, we usually do a sliding scale. Where, you know, the larger the lot, the higher the requirement for the open space, and what it avoids. Um, or, or. Actually, we got so battered by this in Scarsdale, we. We, we, we kind of went to the open space standard because defining impervious surface and is, has been, uh. Every time I've tried, you know, gravel driveway, well, some engineers say that's not impervious surface, it's gonna get compacted. And it shouldn't be cut, and so defining what is in purpose, in, in previous service. And sometimes, and it changes over five or six years, um.
Yeah.
Another community, uh, you know, they allow the interlaced. Grass in the middle, but then engineers were telling me that over time. That becomes impervious also, the grass, you know, it becomes gravel and, you know, it just, it, it doesn't absorb.
Yeah.
So it's a debate, we can do either one that your engineer prefers, um, we can write. Code, the easier one to write actually is the open space requirements, it's easy to write.
Yeah, one, one of them, one I'd be careful of is the simplify height definition and side yard height.
Yeah.
That was something that we instituted about. Ten years ago of a, to try and control the loom factor. On our smaller lots and larger build, larger builds in the residential zone, specifically in the downtown area along South Avenue where. You were allowed to build two and a half stories X thirty-five feet, whatever it was, but you're, you know, five feet from the property line. And it created. Some very massive homes that were right up tight to the next door neighbors, and we instituted the, those, those steps in the building. In order to reduce the lawn loom factor.
That's something we wanna talk about, whether that's working, um, and not to jump ahead, but in the Z B A, the variances in the past year, there's been. Fourteen variances for the side yard height, so I think that's something we wanna talk about too.
And I think, you know, the word simplify there is important because. Right now, it's, the way it's written is very confusing, architects don't understand it, contractors don't understand it, they're. They're not building it properly, and then they're ending up getting these after the fact variances, um, so I think it needs to be clarified, not, not necessarily removed. But there, I've seen issues over the last three years with it.
But assume as part of your work, you're gonna be consulting with the Z B A folks. He's your Z B A folk.
I am.
Okay, I, I'm wanting to speak to anyone on the committees, the board itself.
Potentially, if.
And then in terms of the setbacks on lot size, you know, that's something that we wanna be careful of, particularly in terms of front yard setbacks. Because you wanna make sure that all of the properties within a zone fit into the context and are consistent with each other, rather than having sort of a jigsaw. Looking, um, you know, property line, so, you know, i- it might me, it might be a sense of focusing on side yard setbacks. But this comment was, um, we believe aimed at. The non-conforming lots, so, you know, severely undersized lots that are in a zone that then have to get a variance. Um, so the intention would be to make their lives easier, um, by doing a, all, having a sliding scale for setbacks. Side yard setbacks, for instance, based on the lot size rather than the zone it's in, but we wanna, you know, have a discussion on the pros and cons of that. Uh, in the future as we get into the dimensional standards.
Have you seen regulations to your point of, you know, you don't want kind of a jigsaw where your, your, kind of your front wall is? Where you, you know, to, to maintain that, I don't use the word character, to maintain that condition. That you base your, you know, for example, your front wall location relative to your neighbor sort of thing, that you can't be, you know. Five feet ahead, five feet behind, that sort of thing to, you know, ensure, because the other approach, right, I, I, I mean, it. It, it could be, you know, unintended consequences just based on lot size, because you could have a, you know, a, a. Larger lot next to a smaller lot and. You know, the, the smaller lot may have, uh, you know, the benefit of being closer to the street. Um, particularly when you, you, when you run, you know, you're one acres against your A rez and you're, you know, when, when the, the zones, you know. Are contiguous to each other.
Yeah, we have seen many codes what, which will allow you, the P and Z, if it comes to you, or. If it's just a site plan that, if it's, if single family house comes to Sarah, I don't know how that would work, but. Either one. You many times wanna have not a jigsaw. And you give the commission, we can give the commission the abilities, what we've written in other codes is, you wanna have a street frontage that is somewhat uniform. I presume, I presume that.
That's the intent of.
If you do, you have the option to make sure that, um. You can do that, you have the authority to make sure if you have to, if you have to, for instance.
Why wouldn't you then leave it the way it is, which is based on zone?
So this was my suggestion, this wasn't coming from BFJ, I recommended this because we have a decent amount of lots that have been rezoned. Not in the last thirty years, but you have subdivisions that happened in the fifties that got rezoned in the. Not in the last thirty years, but you have subdivisions that happened in the fifties that got rezoned in the seventies. And so you actually already baked that into the four acre zone. So any two acre lot in the four acre zone can have two acre zone setback requirements. And there are a handful of, um, streets in the two acre zone that are one acre lots that were subdivided before they got switched to two acres. So you know, you have it for certain neighborhoods. But so you have it for certain zones where it's okay, other zones you don't. Um, but there are a lot of non-conforming lots and I think the front yard setback is, um, a very good point, but I, I think it is in particular about side yard setbacks that the problem is, you know, if you, and I can think of one, you have a one acre lot in the four acre zone and you're subjected to fifty foot setbacks. But you have a significantly smaller lot.
You have a hardship.
Or we could just make it as a right, you know, you, you can make it as a right.
Can, we can get it. We have thoughts on this that we can definitely get into. I mean, in terms of variances, we, yeah.
The current ZBA commission doesn't believe a non-conforming lot, undersized, non-conforming lot in a larger zone is a hardship, which is bullshit in my opinion.
Forty, there's been forty-eight variances in the past year.
On the past year.
I'm sorry, in the past year since, um, is it since twenty twenty or is it?
Twenty fifteen.
Okay, I can pull up the spreadsheet that have been related specifically to setbacks.
That's ten years.
We, yeah, so ZBA, we did ten years.
Oh, ten years, yeah. That have been really specifically to setbacks, yeah.
That's not that many then. That's about four a year.
Right.
Four to five, yeah.
It's been significantly less in the last three years because of a lot of work we've done internally to help residents not apply it for variances because they're getting significantly harder to get.
Would, would this type of, of, um, a, a change in the setback requirements only apply to the larger acreage zo- uh, zones? Or would you apply it to the smaller zones within town? Cause that's where you'll run into problems if you're basing it on lot size where you have, you know, um, and a ten thousand squ- or a five thousand square foot lot next to a twenty thousand square foot lot, then you're gonna end up with that. Huh?
We honestly have many of those, but, um, no, I mean, and again, I, you know, I'm happy to have this conversation right now, but I think, you know, again, it was just a thought, it was just an idea. It's I don't have it fully thought out right now. That's why it's just listed on this, you know, piece of paper as a summary to think about down the road, but.
One, one of the issues I found that, um, often annoys residents is, okay, you know, the house next door just got way bigger and it's very close to the property line and their kids room is looking out in our pool. And I don't like it. Or now I got loom and my precious garden is now in perpetual shadow or something like that. They, it tends to get people distressed. And so I hear you on the side yard. I mean, the front yard, you got a street in front of you. So you, you've physical distance baked into it because of the front yard. It could be in the backyard too, depending on situation, but side yards um, tend to be the, the, the issue I've found because often the residents want a bit of a backyard. So they'll, they're selfishly motivated to create one. Uh, the side yard, they figure, well, I'm not gonna use that anyway. So must, you know, use up that real estate.
Just, just one question on the, um, the non-conforming lot issue. Have you seen in other municipalities, I mean, because it seems like it's a very targeted concern? You know, that this becomes a, say, for example, it's a, it's a special permit for anybody who has a, a non-conforming lot based on, you know, area dimension, whatever, to come for a special permit to get, you know, modifications to, you know, certain bulk waivers of, of certain degrees as opposed to say, you know, kick it to ZBA and hope for, for the best. Have, have planning commissions and zoning commissions taking that on themselves, you know, in your, in other municipalities.
Yeah, we're working in one now. Um, it's a little different than here. It's not a four acre zone, but, uh, but it is a case where we, we've run into this in several areas that where you have an older zoning that was in place, which I think Sarah was mentioning. And say it was once, um, I'm just using this as an example. Say it was once half acre zoning and now it's one acre zoning. What we've done in a couple of other municipalities is write a a regulation that said, if you are non-conforming that way, if you can meet the requirements of the zone that you were once zoned in, then that, though it may be subject to site plan approval, is something that if you can meet those requirements, you don't have to get a variance to, to, um, you know, to add on to your kitchen or to the, you have that type of thing.
That's a much more eloquent, eloquent way to put it. And that, that is what we already have for the, for the four acre zone to two acre zone exemption. It was, if you were illegally subdivided lot when it was a two acre zone, you can have two acre setbacks. So maybe it's just, if you were legally subdivided under more relaxed zoning, you can maintain those setbacks. Maybe it's that.
Anyway. Done in a couple of other communities. It's, it seems to have worked, you know, can't predict here.
It's been working in the four acre zone.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's keep going on the deck because we're running out of time.
So, um, the last item on the residence is consider options for middle housing such as two family zones in the res B area. So, and so zone consolidation, um, we've heard some comments on the, um, possibility of combining retail A and B. Um, also removing business C zone, which is, uh, some office buildings and rezoning it to the business A zone. And then also consider rezoning business D to business B. So those would be map changes that would all, um, you know, have to have corresponding text changes as well that we can discuss. Um, for permitted uses, most uses now require site plan approval for a change of use. Um, so the idea there was to expand as of right uses to cut back on some of the site plan approval that you all have to do.
In certain zones.
In certain zones, yes. Yeah, in certain zones and for certain uses, um, not for all. Uh, and then this was an item from, uh, the PA twenty-two-one, um, that outdoor dining be as a right, but can be controlled with a separate licensing procedure. So that's, that's annotated in the uh, zoning regulations in that document where that's relevant. And then lastly, um, this is a point of discussion, but potentially evaluating, um, the relaxing of area and bulk standards in the business and retail zone specifically.
Hmm.
So that's.
I mean, a point, a point may be not to use the term relaxing. I think it's just in general, it needs to be evaluated because these standards haven't been evaluated since, I think, the eighties. And I just don't know if relaxing is the right term.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Reevaluate. Neutral.
Yes.
Reevaluate.
strengthen them.
Just reevaluate, yeah. Area and bulk standards.
Yeah.
When you say eliminate site plan approval for change of use across the board?
Yeah, they just clarify that.
Well, in the business, uh, this, I think the focus we hear was the business zones. But when we say eliminate site plan approval, it also may be something that is still reviewed by the planning department. But if I'm picked up from our last meeting that you, you wanted us to look at the ability for this commission not to have so many special permits was one thing. And then also you had mentioned that, are there some things that are site planned? That, yeah, does it, right, does it all have to come before you or?
Personal service establishments and.
Yeah, can certain things go to.
An office to a hair salon coming in two weeks, so.
Exactly. What's, what's the point? How does, how does our review?
Staff review rather than.
Yeah.
Review.
Yeah.
Um, okay, special zones and overlays. So, um, same thing of, as evaluating the current dimensional standards, we can, um, you know, use that language, be neutral. Um, we heard that there's some zones like the pedestrian oriented, the PM, P O M Z, Aqua Four Protection Overlay Zone, Millport Housing Zone and Canaan Parish Housing Zones, just as examples that are one off and not all are used currently. And if there's ways to consolidate those or remove if they're not currently used, um, that could help simplify. Uh, there's, um, in PA twenty-one, twenty-nine, um, there's a requirement to remove dwelling unit minimum floor areas if greater than those in the applicable building, housing or other code. So we want to investigate that further and see if there's areas that don't comply with that. Um, also in twenty-one, twenty-nine, the idea of removing the specification for the number of units um, in multifamily de- development. However, this isn't, you know, you, the town can still regulate density. So there is still a control there. Um, but using density rather than the number of units as that control. And then also updating the IT standard, uh, obtaining the parking minimums to the IT standards, which is what's commonly used. Um, it's the Institute for, uh, Traffic Transportation Engineers. Um, and that's essentially an organization that, uh, studies parking patterns, um, and traffic patterns in a multitude of uses, uh, across different contexts and create standards, um, for different municipalities, um, sort of best case, um, best practices for various parking minimums.
Is there a chance, is there a chance that with all the stuff going on in Hartford right now, that's gonna, all those parking minimums and standards are all gonna go away?
I don't, I don't, uh, I don't think so. I mean, I, I think, but.
That is on the table up there right now.
Yeah, I can't tell what's gonna happen, whether they're gonna try to do something that's statewide or it's gonna allow municipalities to do it. For instance, um, Hartford is to me the classic example. I grew up in Hartford. I know the city pretty well. Hartford's lost fifty thousand people since I grew up there. Uh, downtown's, um, lost a lot of office space. In other words, in Hartford, you can build a building, you've got, you've got parking garages that are half empty.
Mm-hmm.
So, do you need minimum parking standards in a situation like that? So Hartford's answer a few years ago was no. Now though, in certain instances, now that Yukon's moved, moved campus into downtown Hartford, and got a convention center in that, if you talk to their development director now, on Mike Frameth, he says, well, wait, we do need some parking standards around Bushnell Memorial. We do need now some parking standards. So Hartford's changing, but in a case like Hartford, they, people tend to cite it, you know? Oh, Hartford's eliminated parking standards. Well, it did for a reason. There was nothing happening in Hartford, literally, nothing happened. Fifty thousand people lost in population. That's not true now necessarily in certain parts of the city. So they're reestablishing some parking standards. So I'm not sure what the state's gonna do, um, you know, sort of, uh, statewide. And I, uh, you know, based on what they did with housing and the governor vetoed it, I would think they would give you, it would give you some home rule choice, but whether they do that or not, I don't know.
Gotcha.
But to that point, in terms of determining just the standard that you use, right? I mean, that, that, I think Hartford's a good example, right? I don't know, uh, because of just the changing nature of the economy and, and people moving in and out and the different businesses. You know, IT, as far as I understand it, is kind of a uniform standard. Is there a more hyper local standard in terms of determining, you know, minimums um, for multifamily in say, southwestern Connecticut that might be different than, you know, in, in central Connecticut or eastern Connecticut sort of thing. Is there a way to use that or is IT kind of just generally the, the, you just go with, go with those ratios?
I, I think the IT makes sense because, um, what they do is take multifamily housing. They study thousands of units and, and I realize that, you know, southwest part of the country could be different here, but they break it down. We have a whole manual on from IT. And they, because they study, you know, take office buildings, they study thousands of those and you know, what is the real parking standard that's, that's needed? And, uh, so it's a little bit more scientific, I think, than a lot of codes, you know, codes. Uh, the old code was just, uh, shopping centers gotta be five spaces per thousand, you know, that was the old code. But do they need, do all shopping centers actually need that? We're working on somewhere they need closer to four point five spaces.
Do you know how many parking spaces there are in sort of the downtown area?
Here, I don't, at the top of my head.
Sixteen hundred.
Sixteen hundred.
I counted.
Wow.
We never have parking because you can't park in front of the store you want to go to. We have sixteen hundred.
Hundred space.
You may have to walk a block and a half, but we have a lot of.
Yeah, you have a lot of parking. But the IT standard normally, I haven't checked your code, I haven't compared them, I find is slightly lower than many of the codes in Connecticut. Not a lot, but slightly. So it, it, if you have sixteen hundred parking sp- already, maybe the IT standard is a good standard for you.
Okay.
Next item on here is affordable housing. So, um, we want to be sure to reassess the inclusionary zoning effectiveness and how it's been used since being adopted. Um, if there's ways to make it more effective. PA twenty-five-seven, this is optional, but just to note that it does allow inclusionary housing fund to be used for acquisition of real property for such housing. Um, if that interests you all.
Are you sure about that?
Mm-hmm.
Be interested.
Yeah, we can make a note of that, yeah. That's something.
Subject to town council approval.
Exactly, yeah. We, yes, yes, all of these. And this is, this, yes, these are all draft right now. Um, the next option, option, uh, or the next item here is a consider expanding affordable housing for new multifamily development. Um, and that goes hand in hand with potentially creating a housing, affordable housing overlay zone. And that would apply specifically to those municipally owned, um, properties. Institutional uses, we've talked about.
Can we hold that? Because I think that's worth a little discussion with the commission because what we usually do on affordable housing is usually, and I'm not sure how you do it, Sarah. We usually look at a one standard for all affordable housing. In other words, it's ten percent, whatever.
So, you know, the strategy of the town is to fund a hundred percent, you know, forever affordable units. And so I think the thinking has always been the town is willing to see denser development when we know it's a hundred percent affordable. That's how the things have been built in the last ten, fifteen years. And so I think, um, you know, this overlay comes from instead of every time there's a new one hundred percent affordable development, they have to come up with a new overlay zone, which is what they did for Millport and they did for Canaan Parish, just making one uniform one where they can just automatically switch to this overlay, get a quicker approval, um, to do that. And then it's just clear for residents.
Public housing, it's all, it's a, it's a development that could be all affordable.
Yeah, I mean, I think realistically it would only be public housing because I don't envision private development ever being a hundred percent affordable, but.
Well, I guess what we do now is that if you're multifamily, um, certain percentage of units need to be affordable for a certain period of time. If they send it's an odd number, you can have like two thirds of an apartment. Uh, you were to check. That's the way it works now.
Sorry, if it's two thirds of an apartment.
He's talking about the inclusionary zoning, um, instead, yeah. So, but again, I think like the approach has always been for the inclusionary where you're only giving us ten percent, it's different standards. And we want it to be different because you're not giving us as much essentially.
Um, institutional uses, we've discussed that a considerable amount tonight, but the idea of potentially having an overlay zone um, and then also creating the intentional uniform standards for the various institutional uses to avoid those one-off text amendments.
I would say there, if we could, there's two options though, because you, you, I think your problem that I heard tonight, I, I didn't know this, was your special permit for institutional uses is probably not working. It doesn't have coverage or.
Well, so it all comes back to our special permit criteria is the same for every single special permit we issue, whether it's for an apartment building on Main Street or a St. Luke's parking garage. It's all, it's all the same special permit criteria.
But it doesn't have to be. What I'm getting at is most communities do control institutional uses, not by an overlay zone, but by a special permit, but one that works. And a special permit that's designed for the institutional use. So there's, there's two options. Good look at, we could look at both of them, yeah.
And the wave any issue, this, so in the wave any park, there's the park, which has some structures on it. Um, uh, but they're also, uh, which are recreational in some fashion or cultural. Um, but there's also the, um, uh, assisted living skilled nursing facility, which is a very distinct type of, its own, but really it's leased by somebody else and you have the high school. So whether those should be different zones. Might be worth considering.
Yeah, I mean, we, right now, we zone a, however large wave any park is the same as we zone a high school and a. I mean, we, right now, we zone a, however large Wavine Park is, the same as we zone a high school and a assisted living facility, and it doesn't.
Doesn't.
It doesn't work.
Or different, different.
We also have some weird regulation where like coverage applies to the entire, lot coverage applies to the entire zone. Do we have something?
Was it one, one of the attorneys, um. Who was representing Wavine Care, I think, um, said that that was his interpretation of the regulation, what he thinks the intention was, but it's not actually explicitly written anywhere.
Okay, uh, yeah, I just, I just found that kind of, i- if that is in the, the, the technical reading, that's kind of weird, but.
Yeah.
Yes, we'll definitely revisit the Wavine Park zone. Um, environmental and site standards, so related to grading and tree removal, something that came out of the conversation with the. Town engineer was the idea of soil disturbance and thresholds for soil disturbance, and that's something that we discussed in Scarsdale as well. But the idea is if you're essentially disturbing a certain percentage of your lot, um, that it needs to, uh. The plans need to be approved, that way there's changes to things like stormwater and drainage. Um, I don't, is it for percentage?
So we, it's not based on percentage right now, it's just a flat.
Cubic yards, right?
Um, square footage or cubic yards, we have both, but it's just a flat ten thousand square feet.
So it's not a percentage of a lot.
So it's, you know, should we?
A percentage.
Potentially, yeah.
Add that in though, yeah, to percentage, yeah, that's, that's um what we discussed in Scarsdale and something that we should talk more about with the town engineer. Um, and then the idea of also prohibiting full lot, um, clear cutting, something that isn't explicitly mentioned. That you might want to specify further.
Good idea.
And then fences and walls, uh, there's many, uh, you know, complexities with that section. The overall idea for now is to simplify and clarify the standards and make them as clear as possible to those who are reading it. Um, lighting, we heard from some subcommittee members, the desire to have dark sky compliance. Um, to cut down on light pollution. And then landscaping, uh, mandating a percentage of native plantings and. The timing is funny because I don't know if you're on this listserv, Sarah, but yeah, there's the, like blown up with that.
Yes, I, I went to Frank and Emily and said, you know, this will be great for our conversation, but there's a listserv of Connecticut planners and. There was, um, a question went out about, does anyone have native planting specifications in their code?
And Bridgefield does.
Yeah, and then a, a bunch of different municipalities responded and said, we have it, we have it, so we have some ideas that we can bring to the table of where municipalities are.
Borrow ideas.
Yes, exactly. See what's working elsewhere, yeah.
Happy, happy to take someone else's good ideas and claim it as our own, yeah. Just to tag on, um, and kind of going back to the residential uses, but to apply here too is. In the discussion about the sports courts and the outdoor. Um, you know, things we've been struggling with over the last few years is not just, we already regulate lighting. But the specific use of the sports court and in particular, the, the ac- acoustics or the sound. Emanating from a sort uh sports court is of a particular concern, damn pickleball, right?
Pickleball, tennis and, and batting cages are not the same thing.
The tennis, uh, yeah.
I, I'm not looking for an answer, but it's something we should.
I will say, I think, cause I, I provided a lot of comments about that, so I think it's noted even more in the annotated set.
Okay.
So it's.
Brilliant.
I will make sure it doesn't get forgotten.
That what?
I, I will make sure that doesn't get forgotten and we address it.
Yeah.
It's a difficult one.
It's a difficult one, and one of the attorneys that was representing an applicant from the east side. Where they were putting in a, what did she call it? It wasn't a sports court, it was like a multi-purpose court or something. That could have been a tennis court, but it was too small for tennis, but it could have been, could have been a whole host of things. And the, we were trying to find a way to help. Mitigate the um sound emanating from the court to the neighbors.
Right.
Between plantings and putting up, you know, acoustic blankets on the fence and all that. But the attorney made a good point, he's like, well, yeah, but I could do the same thing in my, in the driveway. I could put up a basketball court in the driveway and there's nothing regulating the fact that I can't do that. And I'm gonna, uh, the same amount of noise is gonna be emanating from that. So how do we?
And that's.
Do it in your driveway, but as long as it's forty feet by sixty feet with strikes on it.
Parking area.
Yeah, I mean, that's, you know, we're gonna regulate it.
Yeah, so, uh, uh, you know, we don't need an answer tonight, but it's something to think about how to put better guardrails on all of that.
And I, by the way, I will look for best practices on it, it's, I mean, what we've done in the past, but it doesn't address this issue. Is, you know, through noise, um.
Noise, yeah.
A noise which I think you have. Yeah, so.
Yeah, but maybe we could, I mean, maybe we could put teeth into it and say. What, you're laughing? Don't enforce it, because you don't want those calls, but we could put a stipulation in there that sports courts, regardless of. The type or anything else can't be used after eight P M and not before seven A M. Something like that.
That, that one's.
Not here then.
I'm not, unless, unless I'm here at that time of night, but.
Is that legal?
I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
I don't know, is it? I'm asking them.
Yeah. Well, it's not.
These are the things we'll have to consider, you know, is also how much are we trying to regulate private property, you know?
Well, to the benefit and the health, safety and welfare of all their neighbors, right? If we have a noise ordinance that goes by certain times where you can make certain amount of noise before and after.
Where I've seen it normally, and I'm trying to differentiate in my mind if there's a substantial difference is construction.
Yeah, same thing.
Yeah, we know.
A lot of codes.
We have that.
Can't begin construction before eight A M.
Right.
And it can't go after six P M or five P M, whatever the town is.
And the reason is noise and traffic.
Is in traffic, yeah. And so that's a public, you know, that's, you know, public health, safety and welfare, public welfare. So you, I would think you, uh, this is where the conversation with your attorney is important. I would, I don't see a substantial difference. We might be able to put that control on, on courts. It is private, it is private property, but then again, construction vehicles coming to and from creating a house, that's private property. So we could, might be able to consider that. It's, it's just harder for me to, where I grapple with this, I don't have an answer, quite frankly, is. Yeah, there's a difference between hitting the noise of hitting a tennis ball and the noise of hitting a pickleball. But. I don't know how to reasonably, um.
Maybe, maybe they're both limited.
No, I would, uh, what I like is your time ideas, limiting when you can play. Uh, so the people are not playing at midnight.
I mean, we already do that with the field club, for example, right? Ten P M, all lights and all, all activity is done.
And what I'm saying is that, to me, is a simpler, cleaner way to do it than trying to differentiate the noise between a tennis ball and a pickleball. Which I don't, I haven't seen any best practices on that. But, and by the way, I'm not a pickleball player, so I, 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 um. I'm told that people are more annoyed by the sound of the pickleball noise than they are the tennis noise, I don't know.
Let's just say we've had a lot of complaints.
It's always the clicking of the mahjong tiles too, I've heard that.
And I think there's a limit on where.
Talking to my wife.
There's a limit on where you can go, where you should go, you know, and I think certain things are not easily enforceable either. But I think the time limit, what's gonna happen with that is the neighbors will complain to the building, building.
Yeah.
They'll complain, so you'll get, you'll, you'll have enforcement by complaint.
Yep.
Which, I don't know if that's necessarily bad, and it happens in a lot of municipalities.
Alright, so next is procedures.
Yeah, the last, last couple items, um, we can be brief here, so procedures and enforcement. Um, there's some redundant procedures, if there's a way to incorporate them to the general procedures rather than list them over again for each board. Um, or commission, um, clearly listing the required materials for each application type, trying to make it as user friendly as possible to an applicant. Um, and then also across the board with the application process, ensuring legal compliance.
So, there's, I just, there's, there's two things just here that I, I wanted to jump in on, one. Um, the first being kind of clarifying or, or making earlier in the process. How we as a commission get to decide or choose or, or let the applicant know. That we want independent engineer consultant, somebody coming in and analyzing their. Um, you know, their traffic report, their, you know, drainage report, well, whatever it is. And, you know, not doing it, you know, and, and, and giving the applicant expectations that's coming down the line. And it's a cost that's gonna come down the line and they're gonna bear the cost and they know that as they get into the process, cause I, I, you know. We have it on a few applications, we have it on, we don't have it on others, maybe we should have had it on others, and it just kind of. You know, we didn't, we weren't in the right position to, to ask for when things came through, so I, I wanna have, I think we should have a clear. Kind of way that we decide that and let the applicant know that that is a requirement of their application, so we're, you know. Assured that their traffic study is, is, you know, telling you what it's supposed to tell you. I think that, that's one, the other, and, and Sarah, you can correct me, I don't think that we have the power and, and special permits to do terms. Like as a condition, a three year term.
No, it's mandated by statute. So we have, it's like five years, and then you get up to five years of extensions, um, but it's mandated by sta- statute, we can't.
You can't, you can't a one year term limit on something that we said, well, maybe this is, you know, we'll give you a trial run, so to speak, and if, after a year. We can, we can make you come back and that's a condition, that's not.
I mean.
What's going on right now? The library is undertaking a seventeen thousand dollar, um, or parking study.
No, but that doesn't rescind their special permit.
No, but it does, and if they've, and, and if a certain result, they have to spend something like, uh, I think in the contract, two million dollars.
So that was stipulated through the memorandum of understanding between the town, it wasn't, it wasn't P and Z.
I'm just giving them an example where we require.
But that wasn't the planning and zoning commission, just to be clear.
I'm saying if somebody comes to us with an application and we're on the edge of approving. Carp Blanche and we say, well, all right, let's do a trial run and, you know, to, to ensure that it's not going to negatively impact, you know, X, Y and Z. So we'll do it for eighteen months, and in eighteen months, they have to come back and there's a process for renewal. You know, assuming everything's okay. Um, and it's a little less than a full new application, the cost and the process and all that sort of stuff.
The way we've worked around that, Eric, is we can, to what, um, John was getting at. Is you can say, okay, it's approved, but in, you know, X amount of time, you have to check in about X, Y and Z. And if X, Y and Z doesn't meet standards A, B and C, your special permits are rescinded. That's. That's the workaround from this, you know, five year. Limit.
Okay.
We had the same stipulation on the.
White Buffalo.
Saint, and Saint Luke's, uh, deck in there, and we said, if it doesn't fix the traffic problem, then. So we had an if then statement with that approval.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And are we also limited by state statute as to how many times we can lay over a hearing?
Yep, we have, um, specific timelines, there is case law that if, um. You know, you really need more time, you, you can potentially keep going, but, um, it's pretty strict, we can't change that.
Okay. Okay.
So the last two items here, appendix, um, we're aware that most of the documents are outdated in the appendix and they should be updated. Um, and then also from the conversation with the town engineer, they mentioned. The idea of adding the town of New Kane and Drainage certification, certification policy to the appendix since it's referenced in the regulations. Um, and then lastly, definitions and accessibility, so wherever possible, making definitions more accessible. Removing unused or redundant terms, reassessing specific terms to make sure they're working effectively, like building coverage. And then this was something that came out of P A twenty three one forty two and is called out specifically in the annotated regs, but, um. Just checking that the definition of group and family childcare homes are compliant with the state law, um, the public act. So that is the, um, summary. The next thing, um, that we can go over quickly and you can have more time to look over this in your, in your. Um, time between the next meeting, but this is a summary of recent applications that was, um, Sarah provided some spreadsheets on what you all have received. Um, in recent years, so we included, um, a few charts here. We saw that there was an average of approximately thirty approvals per year from twenty twenty one to twenty twenty four. And we use those years because they were just the ones that were most complete. Um, we saw that the most special permits during that time were given for front yard accessory structures and institutional uses. Um, and then we also saw that site plan approval is most prevalent among, uh, personal services. Has a summary of the Z B A, so Sarah, you mentioned this is in the past ten years.
Yep, we get significantly fewer applications.
Sorry, on the site plan approval, I think the personal services, I mean, we do see a lot of those, but I think part of. That number is the fact that we didn't used to, we didn't used to have personal services, I think. We used to allow them, so it became, it was a new thing.
Okay.
Since, I don't remember, since I've been on the commission, that was a new thing, I don't remember exactly when we allowed it, but. So it's kind of like.
Also, I will note the front yard number of applications plummeted when we switched it from a hundred and fifty feet to seventy five feet, so. I think that really worked.
Yeah.
Good, yeah.
And then the Z B A, so we saw that the most variances are given for setbacks, both principal and accessory, but as Sarah mentioned, this is in the past ten years, so. But, put it within that context, and it's about, um, you know, five, four or five setback prin- uh, setback variances for principal uses per year. Um, and then the second most variances, uh, were for coverage with principal and accessory and side yard height. Um, for principal uses, but relatively small if you think about it over the past ten years. The last item, which we'll, um, just introduce briefly, um, that you all have in front of you is the diagnostic report. So, um, this was something that we were asked to provide that is a way of, we saw this as a way of. Tracking, um, the P O C D recommendations and making sure that. Whatever was recommended related to zoning in the P O C D is being considered, um, and taken into the conversation. As part of the zoning update here, so we went through the P O C D and for each goal. That had a recommendation related to zoning, we discussed the zoning status, so what the current. Um, what the existing regulations say about that issue. Um, discussion items, these are in no way recommendations, they're more so, um, you know, opportunities, things that can help lead discussion. Related to these specific recommendations, um, and then notes if there's anything specific that came up. Um, code sections, that way you can locate where in the code the recommendation is referencing, and then topic. Um, if we want to, or if you want to sort the sheet by topic, um, you know, this will be particularly important. For example, one of the topics is residence zones, so for the residence zone meeting, we wanna sort all these comments by residence zones. We'll obviously review all of them, but make sure that any recommendations from the P O C D. That reference resident, residence zones are included as part of our review and the update when we come to you all for that topic.
Um, just for instance, when you come to us for that topic, like these residence zones. But you will be, well, you will have looked at the annotated zoning ordinance that you've done. And the spreadsheet, and that's how you will formulate your recommendations that you come to us with both of those things.
Yes, and public feedback, um, and then also, yeah, any other feedback you receive from the committee, yeah.
Yeah, it's just a list that. So I think, thing here is just, you can go through, go through the list, I don't know that we have to, I mean, we can go through it all tonight, but.
Yeah, so, um, I think just a, a question, um, for commissioners, um. If they have feedback they wanna provide to you on the deliverables, I think it's, you know, ideal for everyone if we just set like a hard deadline of like. Get me your comments by X date, so then they can update these deliverables in a timely fashion. So we're all on the same page, um. I don't know, it works for the commission versus the, uh.
I'd give yourself some time, maybe two weeks or whatever you feel for yourselves, and then.
Two weeks is fine.
The night before the.
Well, it's good, then you'll be all ready for the workshop.
Especially reviewed.
Yeah.
And, um, we'll make these updates to the presentation and get it to you in the next day or so. That way Sarah can take a look and you all can take a look, um, with ample time before the workshop, if there's anything that you.
So you'll see all the slides.
Yeah. And any additional edits we can incorporate.
And if you wanna provide specific examples for us to call out what we're presenting.
Yeah, context is helpful, yeah. You can know what to expect.
This is great.
Yeah.
Very thorough presentation.
Yeah, it's good.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you all.
We'll see you on the twenty third.
Bring, bring the coffee and the cookies and the brownies.
Join it with you on materials for the meeting, just to be sure that.
An internal meeting.
We, I think we should, yeah, I'll, I'll follow up tomorrow, we can set up a meeting.
Yeah.
Um, just to go over next steps and. Um, just to go over next steps and make sure all the materials are set for the workshop.
Yeah, I think we should.
Stay or we're.
You're all set to.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you all. Have a good rest of your night.
Very much.
Thanks.
Commissioners, before we lose Mr. Benton and Mr. Knowles, did they already jump?
Eric's still there, but we just lost.
I'm still here.
Okay. Uh, we have two sets of meeting minutes to approve uh from prior meetings of the zoning regulation update subcommittee. Uh, June third and August twenty-sixth. If anyone has any comments, please speak up now, otherwise I'll call a show of hands. I was not here in August, so I abstain.
Gotcha.
Seen it, but I'll.
Okay.
Can I make a motion?
Make a motion.
Both sets of minutes?
Wonderful, all in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Perfect, thank you very much. Meeting adjourned.